Good evening, calling to order the meeting of the Town of Arlington Select Board. It's February 11, 2019. We're actually starting on time at 7:15. We're on the second floor of Town Hall. Introducing the people we have up here. All the way to my right is Selectman John Hurd. Immediately to my right is Selectman Joe Kuro. I am Selectman Dan Dunn. Immediately to my left is Selectwoman Diane Mahon. And to her left is Selectwoman Clarissa Rowe. And with us tonight are our supporting professional staff. We have Town Manager Adam Chapdeline, Town Council Doug Heim, and Board Administrator Marie Krapelka. Thank you all for joining us. Welcome to everybody. I often, there's a practice that I think that Joe gave me, starting with a quote, which I do often on. Today's quote is Shakespeare. "Brevity is the soul of wit."[53.62][53.62](Laughter). Our agenda for this evening is pretty heavy, which is not too surprising because we're getting cranked up for town meeting. And for this board, the preparation for a town meeting in February and March gets pretty heavy. And so I just invite you all to use your shorter speeches and get your points across quickly. We want to and we will give every issue the attention that it's due, but this is one of those nights where it'll behoove us all to move along. And one of the things you should think about is, no matter where you are on the agenda, there's somebody on the agenda after you. And they deserve the same attention. I will probably repeat the speech shorter when we start the warrant article review. So, moving on. First item is the Hurd Family Nine, a proclamation which I have here, which I would like to read. Mr. Hurd, if you want to prepare your remarks.[113.03][113.03](Laughter).
(Unintelligible).[115.03][115.03](Laughter).
Whereas Herbert C. Hurd and Catherine M. Hurd were the proud parents of 10 children, eight sons and two daughters, all born in their family home in the town of Arlington. And whereas Herbert, together with his eight sons, Arthur, Frederick, Charles, Herbert Jr., Franklin, John, Carlton, and Walter, comprised the Hurd Family Nine, a semi-professional baseball team from the town of Arlington in the 1930s. And whereas the Hurd Family Nine team has the distinction of being the only semi-professional baseball team to be wholly comprised of a father and his eight sons. And whereas the team played its home games in Arlington and away games as far away as Lewiston, Maine, proudly displaying Arlington, Mass. on their jerseys wherever they played. And whereas the youngest member of the team was killed in action in World War II and whose memory the Walter G. Hurd Field is dedicated. And whereas, after the team disbanded, several of the Hurd brothers coached, umpired, and volunteered for numerous youth programs in the community. And whereas, the National Baseball Hall of Fame and Museum has recognized the Hurd Family Nine and its unique part of baseball history, and accepted one of the three remaining Hurd Family Nine jerseys into its archives to be rotated on display at the Hall of Fame. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Select Board of the Town of Arlington, recognize the Hurd Family Nine baseball team and its unique part in Arlington Town and baseball history. And it is signed by us all.[202.81][202.81](Applause).
Thank you. Very much appreciate that. We're very proud of that. The Hurd family lived on Sutherland Road, right up on the hill overlooking Hurd Field, our reservoir field, and that's where they played. From what I understand, there were some pretty big crowds back then. There wasn't a whole lot to do in between war times. So, we appreciate the board recognizing this. And, you know, I'm here to, actually, as the proclamation said, there were three left. One of them, my cousin Frank, who provided most of the information, has, but I'm keeping mine. But I did want to show you, it looks like, it's the old wool. This is what professional players wore back then. You imagine when it was 95 degrees?[251.51][251.51](Laughter). And of equal importance is Arlington, Mass.
Nice.
Thank you. Pretty cool. I very much appreciate it. I know the family does it well. Does as well. Proclaimations are great, but I think most importantly, it becomes part of the public record for years and forever, actually. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it.[272.22][272.22](Applause).
Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Minutes of meetings, January 7th and January 28th. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
All those, motion by Ms. Rowe, seconded by Mrs. Mahon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Next up, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Subcommittee. Sarah Lee, Christopher Potter, and Tenet Sacco. Emery, you told me Ms. Sacco wasn't with us today, is that correct?
Yes, Sarah Lee.
Oh, I apologize. Sarah Lee. Mr. Potter and Ms. Sacco, do you want to come on up to the microphone? Oh, Sarah, I apologize. So Sarah Lee who can't be with us tonight. I'm sorry for the confusion. Welcome. Why don't you please stand right in front of the mic, one of you at a time. It doesn't, if you stand next to it, it doesn't work, so actually, one of you needs to do it at the same time. Introduce yourself, what street you're on, and what brings you to the committee.
My name is Christopher Potter. I live at 130 Mass. Avenue. I'm here because I think this is an excellent way for me to give back to the town. And I have the, I'm a grants manager at Harvard, and I have a master's in urban planning from BU, so I think it'd do me well to help out here.
Awesome. Thank you. Welcome. Pull the mic down. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Toni. I'm at 60 Pleasant Street, just next door. And I was interested in the committee because it's a really great way to get involved with Arlington happenings.
Thank you for joining us. Just a word on this. So, the CDBG Subcommittee up until now has been solely comprised of town employees and elected officials. And what we're adopting this year for the first time is adding residents onto the committee. So, thank you very much, and I think it's going to help our work better. And I hope that you looked at the agenda, and you know that the next thing on the agenda is the CDBG hearings. So, it'd do you well to stick around with those. Questions, comments from?
Move approval.
Second.
And the two or the three? I think the two maybe, and we'll bring in the third.
The two.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by?
Mr. Hurd.
Mr. Hurd, thank you.
Everyone else.
Yep. Any, all right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you very much for volunteering. Next up, Board of Trustees, Stephen Quinlan. Stefan Quinlan? I don't know, it's Stephen or Stephen. Welcome.
Stephen.
Stephen, thank you. Welcome. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you're looking for this committee.
Yes, my name is Stephen Quinlan. I was born and raised in Arlington, graduated from Arlington High School in the year 2000. I've come back to raise a family. I live in East Arlington now, on Amott Street. The reason I'd like to join the board is because I'm very invested in my community. I'm well aware of the benefits that a library system can have for the surrounding community, and I see this as one way to give back.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Kuro. Any further comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for volunteering.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us up to two public hearings. First up is going to be a CDBG performance update for the program year, which will then lead to the CDBG requests for 2019 funding. Ms. Weiman.
Good evening. So I'm Julie Weiman, the Community Development Block Grant Administrator here in Arlington. So I'm going to briefly talk about two things. The mid-year report for the 2018-2019 grant year and the applications for 2019-2020. So, you all have the mid-year report with you, but I will just briefly highlight the successes our subrecipients are having. So, in the rehab and housing category, the Housing Corporation of Arlington outlined the goal of completing capital improvements on six units of their rental housing, and they have already completed five of those six units. In the same category, the Arlington Home Rehab Program has provided one loan to a resident here in town, and they have two additional loans in the pipeline toward meeting their goal of 12 households. In the public services category, you can see that our subrecipients have already served almost over 2,000 residents, so they really have already met and exceeded their goal that they had outlined for this year. And the Boys and Girls Club, Fidelity House, the Council on Aging, and Operation Success have actually met and exceeded that goal. Public facilities and improvements. So in this category, the Department of Public Works and the Disability Commission consistently apply for a joint application for ADA-compliant curb cut ramps. And some years, the weather really hampers the successes, and actually, this year, it's been great. They have been able to put in 140 ramps with a concentration of 55 of them in the Sunnyside Neighborhood. And then new this year, Food Link applied to us for an application to put in a new facility. So in years past, they've applied for a public services grant, but this year, with the expansion of their organization, they needed a new operations facility. So this past year, CDBG provided $327,000 for that new facility, which they were able to purchase in the fall. And then lastly, in this category, is the Spy Pond Trails, which is put in by the Conservation Commission. This project is behind schedule, but they do expect to still complete construction by the end of June. And then lastly, Envision Arlington applies annually for their survey, and they've already received over 3,500 surveys, which is 1,000 more than they received last year with the survey. So, in total, the subrecipients are doing wonderful work. I think they'll probably speak for one minute about the good work that they're doing this year, but I just wanted to give you that quick synopsis. And then, just briefly about our 2019-2020 applications. So, we received applications from the same organizations and departments that we have received in the recent past. So in housing and rehab, two from the Housing Corporation of Arlington, one from the Arlington Home Rehab Program. In public services category, three from the Boys and Girls Club, one from the high school, one from Operation Success, one from the Arlington Youth Counseling Center, three from the Council on Aging, two from Fidelity House, and one from the Rec Department. In public facilities and improvements, we have, again, one from the Conservation Commission this year, and again, one from Food Link this year, and again, that annual DPW curb cut ramp application. New in this category, the Rec Department has submitted an application this year. And then, a number of requests from the Department of Planning and Community Development for both planning and administration, and lastly, Envision Arlington. So, just to quickly highlight two different applications from what we've seen in the recent past. Housing Corporation of Arlington is applying for solar panels on their Capital Square Apartments. HCA has outlined that this will help to reduce utility costs for their residents who make a lot of moderate income. And then, the Rec Department. So they are applying again for scholarships, but in addition, they are applying for money for the reconstruction of the Luciano Playground, which is that North Union Park, the playground at the Thompson School. And this application came with a number of letters of recommendation from a number of residents as well. So, in total, we received requests for over $1.6 million, and I think we should have access to about $1.3. So, if the Select Board would vote to move that to the CDBG Subcommittee, we will meet to decide funding recommendations, and then come back, probably at the end of March, with those recommendations.
Cool.
So moved.
Second.
So, let's, do we want to hear everybody before we actually vote? Yeah, okay.
Can I just?
Yep.
I just want to congratulate Ms. Weiman and others, everyone associated with Food Link. Brand-new location. It's on, at 108 Summer Street. It's open seven days a week, 363 days a year.
Yep.
Two that's off. And that's such a great accomplishment, and such a vital service, because I was the kid that, you know, they kind of reminded you were poor, they gave you the block of cheese uncut, and stuff like that. But if your family is in that situation, you know, single parent, two parents, three, four, whatever, it's a great resource to have. And I was really, we were all concerned about where that would go. And I know that was kind of a Herculean effort, so thank you for kind of weathering that through.
Anytime. My pleasure. Thank you. Can I hand it over?
Sure. And just wanted to be clear, so we're going to be doing the performance update and the requests, we're going to mix them together and just have them come up?
We will do that, yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks so much. Should we do just whoever would like to come up first?
(Unintelligible).
Oh.
Good for you. They're pros. They're pros.[836.63][836.63](Laughter). They've been here a long time.
First of all, sorry in the passing of Kevin Greeley, your friend and colleague. Very sad. Operation Success is in its 20th year. We made it through with volunteers Monday through Thursday evenings. We're going to be moving into our new facility down in Monody Manor, hopefully in April or May. We really value the CDBG grants. We take it very seriously, and we appreciate all that you can give us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions from the board? John, among others, you may not have heard, it's new, yeah. It's your first rodeo for this hearing. Everyone all set?
They do wonderful work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Susan Karp from the Council on Aging. We're the proud beneficiaries of three of the grants. So we have Adult Day Health Services. I have a couple of my board members here. So we get funds for Adult Day Health, and we collaborate with Cooperative Elder Services, and we're able to service 19 Arlington households. What we do to supplement that budget is that we have, we offer a caregiver support group by one of our social workers. We partner with Bright View of Arlington, and we hold a memory cafe. Memory cafes are programs that are designed for the care partner and the individual that is declining cognitive health. We also try to expand our relationship with those individuals by connecting them with our information and referral specialist for things like SNAP, fuel assistance, and any other scholarship programs that we have. So we want to say thank you for that. This year, we have bumped the number up to 19, which is really satisfying, because at $81 a day, our $300 scholarship is certainly a nice gesture that we're able to do. The other program, one of the other programs that we have is through transportation. As you know, our transportation services, we keep them moving. We take people to medical appointments, to shopping appointments, to hair appointments, for civic engagement activities, for volunteer activities. Something new for us is the Uber. So we've talked about it the last couple of years. We actually implemented our first Uber activity in transportation in January. We've had four successful rides. It's something called Uber Connect. So an individual does not require a smartphone. They call into our office. It has to be done during our operating hours. It's called Uber Connect. So they'll call in, talk to Christine Shaw, who's our volunteer and transportation coordinator. She'll take the information. We can actually watch the ride as it's going, and the individual has to pay, we use it for medical. So the individual's having to pay the same rate that we charge for medicals. And then, we have a small scholarship fund to offset the difference between. Brand-new program, we're monitoring it. We hope to come back next year and tell you all the other good stories with it. So that's our new program with that. Transportation is a vital service within the Council on Aging. We certainly do over 13,000 rides per year, and that's not counting all of the cancer rides that we provide. I will say that through the expansion of the volunteer side of it, our medical escorts are helping us offload those medical transportation pieces off the van, which is allowing us to increase ridership on day-to-day activity. So that's a really exciting, you know, movement within that transportation piece. The volunteer coordinator, which also is the volunteer, the volunteer coordinator and the transportation coordinator, she's the same person. It is completely funded by CDBG. I will tell you, for the first six months of this year, through the volunteer assistance, we've been able to make over 1,600 individual contacts with seniors. So our volunteers do everything from administrative work at the reception desk, data input, program management, volunteer driving, you name it, they do it. We have over 230 that support our organization per year, and that number may seem very large, but a lot of our programs do require a number of individuals, and it's supported by the organization as well as our volunteer coordinator that's funded. I'd like to thank you all very much. Julie, I'd like to thank you for working with us and reviewing our grants. Thank you.
So, I'll just say that when I was doing my, reading my board prep, the volunteer coordinators, so they talk, like, part of this mid-year review is the number of people who are contacted, and the volunteer coordinator's contact of 1,633 people was a number that jumped off the page.
So, that number represents the individuals that our volunteers have had direct contact with, with their help.
Mm-hmm.
It's a big number, and it's growing.
Mr. Kuro.
Thank you. As your liaison to the Council on Aging, I see how hard these folks work. They rotate through staff members every month to kind of tell us about their work. But this, I'm glad you highlighted the volunteer coordinator, because I think this is something true about a number of our applicants, and particularly, in this case, where this is money really well spent. It's a, it really has a multiplier effect, because the economic value of those volunteer hours that are put into service to the members of our community are just so important. And so I'm very happy to see this come forward again.
And they are also the thread of Arlington. They've lived here, they've retired here. It's incredible.
Yeah.
For other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all, board members, for coming as well. Who do we have coming up next? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Deanne Dupont, co-founder of Food Link. And Diane, thank you for the wonderful words that you said. Actually, it made my things a little shorter, so.
No, I'm not.[1225.21][1225.21](Laughter). You can say it again.
Okay. So, about the 363 days, we do close Christmas and Thanksgiving. And our stress level actually goes down on those days rather than up, like, for most people. But with our new facility, currently, we collect and distribute sufficient food for 400,000 meals annually. And with our new facility, the capacity, we calculated the capacity to be at least 1.6 million meals. That's the amount of food we'll be able to collect, sort, and distribute, so that folks can prepare those meals. So our request for this year is to provide part of the funding for Food Link to do the site work necessary for our volunteers and staff to be able to access our new home. The parking lot and retaining walls are in disrepair and have reached their useful life. Food Link plans to make the parking lot such that our volunteers, who use wheelchairs and walkers, are able to easily access the building with an accessible parking space as well. It will make it so that our delivery truck can easily deliver food to Food Link and for sorting and further distribution. The site work includes permeable surfaces to mitigate stormwater runoff and retaining walls to reduce erosion. Support of this project indirectly benefits many Arlington organizations, including the Arlington Food Pantry, Eats, Boys and Girls Club, the senior citizens residing in residence such as the Arlington Housing Authority, Fidelity House, Young Adult Vocational Program, Wayside Youth and Family Services, AYCC, Arlington Senior Center, the Council on Aging, and the Community Meal, Neighbors Eating, all together. Thank you once again for your past support, for making a game changer for food. Like, I cannot tell you what a game changer it was for us. And thank you for considering this year, supporting us again, so that we can provide fresh nutritious food to low and low moderate income individuals and families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions?
Okay, thank you.
Who do we, yeah. It's going to be a race to the microphone.[1360.42][1360.42](Laughter).
So, I'm Julie Brazil, and I chair the Envision Arlington Standing Committee. So I want to just take the opportunity to remind everybody that the survey is still open. We've done our best to make the URL easy, so it's the basic arlingtonma.gov and then forward slash survey. It's open until March 1st. We do have a lot of more responses this year than last year, and we're encouraged by that. We recognize that it was hard for many people when we switched from mailing the physical survey to every household to simply mailing a reminder to go online, or to go pick up a paper copy at either of the libraries or at the senior center. That's a big adjustment. It's not convenient for everyone. It's fabulously convenient for some. Anyone who has ideas and suggestions for this year or next year to help us develop and strengthen ways to help people take the survey if they don't get the online part, we'd love help and ideas to continue expanding and making it easy for people to access this way to participate in Arlington civic life. Thank you.
Questions?
Okay.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Lisa Urban from Fidelity House in Arlington. Just want to remind you quickly, the program that we run, it's down at Monami Manor, and it's threefold. We run a day camp, where we pick the kids up in the morning, and they come to day camp. Swimming lessons are involved in the morning, free swim in the afternoon. It's really an awesome camp experience. And then, during the school year, we pick the kids up once a week, bring them to Fidelity House, they get free memberships, use our programs for a reduced, if any, fee. And then, we do a program onsite once a week. It's an awesome program. It's vital that you guys have helped us out. It's been great. I appreciate it. You are going to know us this year. I did ask for more money, and it's because, as you're aware, we've been at Minuteman for 25 years. They built that great new facility, great for them, not great for us, because there's no pool. So we had to locate another one. And 25 years ago, it was great to, very easy to get a new location with a pool and rent out. Not so easy this year. Just there are a lot of very for-profit camps that are out there that really can afford a lot, and we are extremely lucky, and we got a great location, Regis College, and it's perfect for us. But it is a little bit more money, so, you know, we want to make sure the same amount of kids from Monami Manor are able to come, so you will see a little higher reflection than that. But it is such a worthwhile program, and we're really excited. It's really, it's really a great location for us. We also have the Jobs, Jobs, Jobs program, which has been great. You know, the kids that work in the summer and receive that Jobs, Jobs, Jobs funding, it's usually their first step into getting any job, and it's kind of good for them to realize they can get a job and learn the experience. And then we end up, we end up usually there hiring them for, from then on. So, it's worked out great for us. It's worked out great for the community, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for the board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lisa. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Stacy. I'm with the Recreation Department. I'm the acting director. The Recreation Department has applied for two grants from CDBG. One for our scholarship fund. Annually, we give opportunities to kids that can't afford to attend our programs, and the CDBG grant has been super helpful in allowing that to continue on. The other application we filled out for was for the North Union slash Luciano, depending on what year you arrived here in Arlington, playground. The playground needs to be completely redone. It's a safety hazard. There's a lot of issues and things down at the playground. And it is a, it is a neighborhood playground. In fact, I have, if you guys will stand, quite a few members from the community who wrote letters of support for this program, for the playground to be done. So, it's a great spot. It's a good location. Lots of people come, and it's sort of destination playground in Arlington. Any questions?
Just that, one of the things, just on the progress, one, like the mid-year update. And so, do you, just seeing, you've got, you still have a bunch of scholarships left, you'll be able to, is it, sometimes is it like, the paperwork is slow, or slow or hard?
We typically give the bulk of our financial assistance for our summer programming.
Okay.
So we do, so the first half is, you know, for our basketball travel program, but the bulk of it is for the summer programs, not camps, that we run in town. So that's when most of it comes in. So in the next couple of months is when we'll be allocating most of that.
Thank you. Mrs. Mah.
I'm thrilled that you're doing all the projects that you're doing. I'm one of the people that says Luciano Park.
Okay. I'm still learning these things.
No, when I first got on the board, so I want to say, let's say I got on in '99, one of my projects was to pick a couple of parks and all volunteer, fundraise. So that's been there since probably 2001. And a lot of the town employees volunteered their time because who Luciano Park is named after was one of them. So whatever form you can retain that. And when we got to do Cutter School, everything was totally donated labor, things like that. So if that somehow can be included in there, I know a lot of people still, I mean, unfortunately, he's passed now, but that sort of was a bit of the motivation for almost 20 years ago. And he was, he was quite outspoken.[1743.11][1743.11](Laughter). I remember him coming to.
Wonderful.
meetings here, talking about maintenance.
Yes.
He hadn't done enough.
Wonderful. Yes, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
All right.
Do we have anybody else? Yes. Welcome.
Good. Thank you. Pan-Housing, what are, who am I? Executive Director of the Housing Corporation of Arlington. So I'll talk a little bit, very briefly, about the applications I put in. And I want to go back to the money that you've given us over the years. So we are asking for solar panels. We are putting them on Capital Square. That's our plan. We're still negotiating with limited partners that we are involved with there. But tomorrow's our big meeting, so I think that'll come through. And what our intention is, is to have all of the electricity that we currently have to pay for at Capital Square taken care of, but also the majority of the tenants' electricity up at Nine Westminster, oh, 20 Westminster, the nine units up there, taken care of. We're thinking we can get probably 50% of their cost of heating, hot water, and cooking taken care of up there. So that's our plan. It was sort of an unusual request, but we're also hoping that sort of ties in with the Arlington's decision to sort of cut your carbon footprint. And so that's the direction we'll move in. But I wanted to say, thank you so much for the CDBG money for the past number of years, five years. I can't speak in detail today, but we got it. And there will be, Adam will speak to you more in detail about what I'm talking about. And keep February 28th as a date in your mind that you might want to drive to a serve and be with me. Okay?
I think they call that vague booking when it's online.
Vague, yes. Trying to keep it vague.
Save the date.
Yeah, save the date.
Questions or comments?
Wonderful.
Yeah, I just, I just have a quick, thank you for all of the work. I mean, this is, I appreciate the work that goes into not only what you do on a day-to-day basis, but also these applications are very, makes for very educational reading. One thing you said, you mentioned 90 Westminster, heating, hot water, and cooking. So is that all electric right now, so that you could use the solar to?
That's exactly what we're doing. It was originally against the gas with the National Grid explosion and all of that and the delays that we ran into. We decided to reconfigure the utilities up there and go electric instead. And that's when we decided to go for the solar as well at Capital Square to keep the cost to the, of the utilities down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's everyone.
All right. So we have a motion by Ms. Rowe, seconded by Mrs. Mahan. Is there any further discussion? All right, the CDBG subcommittee is me, Diane, Adam, Julie, and our three new members. And we've picked two dates, I believe, in March already for our, for our meetings, and those will be posted, and we'll grind it out and
It's a lot of fun.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero vote. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Julie.
Excuse me.
Item number seven, for approval, Arlington Porch Fest Headquarters in Jefferson Cutter House Lawn, June 8th, 2019, Linda Schumaker. Welcome.
What do you mean? Hi, everybody. So I am Linda Schumaker, Executive Director of the Arlington Center for the Arts. And as you may know, we have run Arlington Porch Fest over the last three years. This will be the fourth annual. And just to let you know, kind of the impact this, this event has had on Arlington, last year, we had nearly 100 bands and performers on, I'm sorry, 200 bands and performers on 100 front porches, front driveways, you know, lawns throughout the town of Arlington. Our numbers show that about 10,000 people came into Arlington's neighborhoods and business districts during Porch Fest. One of the things that made Porch Fest really sparkle last year was the addition of dedicated headquarters for the event. It's by nature a decentralized, sprawling, spread-out kind of event. But you all last year approved Porch Fest Headquarters on Whittmore Park in front of the Dallin Museum, and that gave us a place where we could pass out maps, answer questions, send people, you know, to where they were looking to get. And it really provided some coherence and kind of a core center for the event. So we'd like to do that again this year. The date is Saturday, June 8th. We're asking from noon, 12 noon to 6:00 PM, to set up a tent and headquarters for Porch Fest.
Move approval? Second?
Any questions or further discussion?
It's a wonderful event.
It really is.
Awesome.
It's just great.
What I would throw in, I know in a little bit you're gonna be talking about the Beer Garden, which if approved and moved, moved forward, will begin on June 1st. So that puts us in the, in the garden with the Beer Garden at the, at the same time. And we've been in conversation already with the folks at Town Planning Department to make sure that whoever is the vendor to run the Beer Garden this year, if that goes forward, that we'll work in partnership with them to create, you know, work together.
It does feel, it does feel like things that can work together.
I think it will be great. I think it'll be great for, for both, both programs.
That does just raise one question for me, though, because I know that last year, you had some of the acts were at Whittmore Robbins. So if the Beer Garden is there, I assume it kind of changes a little bit how you approach that.
Well, we'll work with, yeah, thanks. We'll work with whoever is the, what do you call it, vendor? For the Beer Garden to work together to choose the music for the afternoon.
The RFP draft covers it.
Yeah.
I want to get that band with all the volunteer horn players.
The School of Honk. It's scheduled for 6 o'clock at Whittmore Park.
That's the most wonderful band.
It's great. A grand finale to the day.
It is. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
When's the website can be available to book bands?
Starting March 1st. Yes.
So I was a little late, I was a little late in the game last year. So I had to bring my own band in. But there were a great, I thought that was a great idea last year to allow both the bands and the hosts to kind of interview each other as opposed to being assigned. And, you know, as I went through down the list, I saw a lot of bands. I was like, oh, that'd be great. But they're already booked up, so I'll look on March 1st.
First, very good.
I thought you were gonna break on guitar, man.
Well, I was taking guitar lessons around the time of Porch Fest last year. And I told Joe that was my goal, to be in Porch Fest this year. Life caught up with me a little bit.
Some people know their musical abilities and some people don't. I know mine. None.
I lost who made the motion.
Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Ms. Rowe.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, approval, removal of natural gas moratorium. Mr. Chaplin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I've been in conversations with the Director of Inspection Services since the last meeting. And it's, it's a bit challenging because I know the board's, the board is desirous of some heightened level of security or safety that we can assure. But after, after a conversation with Mr. Byrne, he feels very confident with the, with the protocols the National Grid has in place, with the return of the certified and trained workers, the unionized workers, that necessary safety protocols are in place. Going further than that, he believes, and I also agree, that we, we don't have the resources in the Inspection Services Department on an ongoing basis to maintain some additional level of oversight. All permits, all holes in the ground cut by the National Grid will still have to go through the Engineering Division, as they always have. So we will be exercising our right to govern when they can or can't actually dig in the ground. But as for exercising further supervision, should the moratorium be lifted, we, we don't feel that we can recommend that we have the personnel to do so. But we do feel, we do feel as though the protocols coming out of this lockout with the additional pressure from DPU has created a more safe situation than, than prior.
So.
Mr. Kuro.
I guess I would, I would, well, is there a timeline then? He feels that at this point, that it would be safe for us to remove. I, I guess there's no digging happening right now anyways during that.
So I guess I, I would say that as soon as all of the workers have been locked out, are back and are recertified and retrained, would be when we would be comfortable reissuing permits again.
Okay, I would, I'd like to move that we lift the moratorium once those criteria are met, as, you know, certified by the building department.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Hurd.
So how are we gonna know when that happens? They're gonna notify us that all the workers are, have returned to work?
So one of the byproducts of this lockout was Inspection Services now has a robust dialogue with National Grid, so they will notify us when all the workers are returned and certified.
And do they have an idea of when that's gonna be?
You know, I don't have a good sense. My understanding was it would be about a month's time from when the lockout ended. So that's probably, now, now that the ink is dry and everything, it's probably another two to three weeks, I would guess.
Mrs. Mahan?
I'm expecting the answer to be no. But I'm just thinking of, I know one of the venues that citizens can use around National Grid is Inspection Services in the hours that they operate. In terms of off-hours, you know, later in the night, weekends, things like that, is there, and it's okay if the answer's no, but is there a process or a protocol or something that either we can direct the concern to somebody at National Grid or do we recommend them to go online to a certain website and category? If we could, and I'm, I'm willing to vote for this moratorium. That was the only other question that people got out there. Maybe find out from National Grid, you know, what is the protocol process for off-hours and weekends? So that instead of like me calling you and saying, oh, you know, I've got three residents on the street, that maybe I could direct them, I mean, I hate just directing them to the main number because you lost them prompts.
So tell me, what would this be for? The smell of gas or what would, what would be, what would be generating this call?
I would say just initially, when the moratorium is being lifted, where people are probably gonna be super vigilant and perhaps, you know, like me, a nervous alley, you know what I mean? And if they do have concerns, maybe you could find out from the National Grid representative that we have. What's the best thing? Is it a certain number? But could it be, you know, almost like a direct line number? Or is it a certain website? Or if it does have to be prompt off the main number for National Grid, just find out what the prompt is so that, I, I'm just thinking, when the moratorium first gets lifted, maybe some people are really heightened with concerns. I'd rather, and if the answer is not that we can do, just tell them to call the main number, then that's the answer.
I can find that out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion? The motion to lift the moratorium, I made by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Ms. Rowe, once the condition of the workers being trained and returned is met. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero vote. Thank you very much. Next up, RFP for the 2019 Beer Garden, Mr. Chaplin.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. So as just alluded to in the prior, prior agenda item, this is a draft RFP that's been drafted by Ally Carter in the Planning Department that would allow us to issue this for, basically, a competitive procurement for vendors to attempt to operate a Beer Garden in Arlington, once again, at Whittmore Park this upcoming summer. The key differences are an extended season that would start on June 1st and go through September, so it would be just about a month longer than last year. And it also has built into the language, built-in rain dates, basically saying that they would operate one weekend date per weekend. The base idea would be to operate on Saturdays, as was last year, but should a Saturday be rained out, they would be able to operate on a Sunday, but not both, so that there wouldn't be so many dates potentially lost to rain. Beyond that, most of what is in here is what happened last year and worked well, and we want to happen again, as well as some notes of what, what we'd like to see happen going forward. There'd be still the remaining requirement, excuse me, the continuing requirement, to work with local food vendors. And as I believe Mr. Dunn pointed out, there's also the explicit requirement that the successful bidder would have to work with the ACA during Porch Fest on that weekend that was just a Portch Fest. So we, we'd like to get, we'd like to get this out, when do we, when do we say we want to get it out? We'd like to get it out before the end of February. The schedule in here, we, we could change. If the board was willing to approve this tonight, we could, we could issue this RFP. If there's questions that we need to go back and address, we can come back at the next board meeting to get final approval and then move forward.
Ms. Rowe.
Adam, I, I know a number of people have talked to me about the condition of the park after the Beer Garden. And I have done work for the Friends of the Common and Garden in Boston, and they have lots of large events. As part of the fee for using the park, there is some money set aside for restoration of the lawn that I think should maybe be applied here so that at the end of the season, the, the lawn could be aerated and, you know, it's, I don't need to go into the technical long-tine aeration, but what it does is it, the, the soil is very compacted by that kind of thing. And it, I don't think it would cost a lot of money to do it, but I think at the end of the season, for people to see that you're putting the natural sort of carpet that everybody's been on back into a healthy condition might be a good thing to add on to the permit fee or the, the, just to say, you know, you'll have to pay for this. And all you need to get is an aeration machine to come and do it. And I think it would be well worth.
The investment?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Sounds fair.
I'm probably, I think this is a redundant or rhetorical question, but I just want to know the process, it's probably similar to Town Day, on the liability insurance policy, where we're also requesting that they put the town on for a million dollars. What's the tickler system or who makes sure that that gets done and gets done properly? Churney Heim? Like, do we get a notification? Is, is the ticklers checkbox system that once somebody's chosen and they get that liability insurance policy that adds the town of Arlington on for a million, does that automatically go to town manager, town council, and that's how we know it was done? Just because I've seen some other events in the past, not with the town, but involved other entities, and just because it wasn't named correctly?
Ms. Mahan, typically what happens is a contract gets generated out of the RFP process. And in order for myself, the manager, the comptroller to sign off on the contract, they'll have to include a certificate of liability insurance. Myself and my staff, it's one of the key things we focus on to make sure that the right entity is named, to make sure that the insurance values are appropriate, and to make sure that it's got the right date on it, which is one of the more surprising things that oftentimes
That's what I mean. I'm not even.
Yeah, so, yes, it is something that my staff or I personally look at before I sign off on every contract.
So I won't endeavor to try to find it. It's in your hands. Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kuro.
I think you all know what I'm, I'm dressed here. I continue to have, I mean, thank you for all the work. I, I think by and large, it just looks, looks great. But I continue to have a problem with restricting access to the property of the park on the, on the basis of age. I think that last year's vendor did a great job of, of IDing folks, enforcing the, the ID bracelets for the purchase of beverages, enforcing the, the food requirements through, through the, through the bracelets. I think did a great job. It was the same vendor that was down the Schwann Mill. They did a great job down there. But there's no such age restriction down at the Schwann Mill. We don't require this at, at the theaters, where people are in the dark. We, we don't, we don't have that, that type of a restriction on entry to the premises. This is out in the wide open. I, I think it's a lot easier to police. And, and I have, you know, an added concern now that, I, I think it's great that we're coordinating with the ACA on, on Porch Fest on that day, but now we're saying that a portion of the community, the younger portion of the community, won't be able to access the headquarters for Porch Fest, won't be able to access the entertainment there on, on that day. And I have a real problem with, with that. Will it keep me from, from voting against this? No, but I don't know. I want to throw that out to the board and see if there's, if, if anyone has any further thoughts on that, or I'm still a lone voice on, on restricting access to the park itself on the basis of age.
Mr. Hurd.
We talked about this, I don't know if we brought this up before, but it always made sense to me that when Joe had these concerns, if there's an entrance here that we're shutting it down, is it a, does it need to be two exits for fire purposes? That why can't they put the barrier here and leave that an open area for people that are under 21?
I mean, their, their basic response has been consistent. And there, there being aeronaut, though this would be competitive, that it's not worth the risk to their license. But they just, they just see too much risk to have intermedately.
Instead of it being all of Whittmore Park, there's some sort of a locker behind the stage. There's an entrance, and there'd be an area that could be the people couldn't drink in. It wouldn't be part of the Beer Garden. They can just, I mean, you're looking at the back of people, but I think that would alleviate some sort of concern.
Well, and I also note, Mr. Chair, I'd note that we don't know that this is gonna be aeronaut. We'll put this out to competitive bid. There may be another vendor that doesn't, doesn't feel the same risk. Understand, if you have a visible wristband, you have a visible cup. have a visible wristband, you have a visible cup, it's not as big of a risk. That's the way I feel on this.
I'm, I don't want to, I don't want to make Aeronaut do something that they're not comfortable with or another vendor, but I definitely would be comfortable with changing the RFP to either permit or even encourage underage, but not, but I'm not quite ready to require them to change their mind would be my thought on that.
I'd feel a lot more comfortable with that.
I've got one other. Go second.
I'll move to make that change, to remove that as a requirement of the RFP. I don't know if I got a second.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Kuro. And so are you, can I take that as you're moving the RFP with that, with that change?
With that? Sure, unless others have...
There, you'd be the first motion, so...
Okay. Yes. I'm moving the RFP with the removal of the restriction. It says children under the age of 21 will only be allowed into the beer garden under the supervision of a parent or guardian, removing that sentence.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Heim. Thank you. Just for point of clarification, because you talked about a couple of different things. One concept is just striking the language completely. The other was adding it as a part of the competitive criteria such that you would essentially state that a, the highly advantageous bidder would provide means of access for persons under 21. But, Mr. Kuro, I just want to make sure it's clear, your motion is limited to just striking it entirely as a part of the...
Striking the entrance to the premises.
Okay. Thank you.
Not striking anything about, you know, not striking the next sentence or with the wristband policy and everything. That stays, that has to stay, but just striking the requirement that you'd be 21 to enter the premises.
Mr. Hurd.
An unrelated question. Are we going to require an RFP for this every year?
Yes.
Because the numbers, I don't have them in front of me, but Aeronaut said that they essentially broke even last year, right? And that was because of their initial investment?
Initial investment combined with the rainouts.
Okay. So hypothetically, if we had a different vendor every year, no one would make any money. But, okay, just wondering.
And I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what Mr. Kuro, Joe, has said, that we're going to take out that sentence, but we're not going to impart, either way, like I don't want like Aeronaut to think, "Oh, I don't have a chance" because they want that out, because I think in terms of liability, the insurance and all those costs, they wouldn't make any money if they had an event like that, but that's for them to do. So what we're doing is we're taking it out, but we're not saying, "You have a better chance if you do have everyone, including everyone under 21." We're just taking that out as a requirement to bid. So Aeronaut can still bid and say, "I want to run the event that I ran before, and here's what my proposal is, and Group B and Group C can submit," and maybe they do want to do that, and they can sustain, you know, because it's a much more liability for that.
I'm accepting that the chair's suggested compromise, yeah.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is we're not going to, I just want it that, it is what it is, and when the RFPs come in, they come in, and they'll be weighed, and a decision will be made that's best for the town and the space. So I just want it to be that anyone's, we're now saying, "Don't bother putting in a proposal if you're not going to..."
Right.
You know, put in your event whatever it is you want, and it'll go through the process the way it should. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
I was going to ask for the same clarification. Thank you. That's, that's good.
So we're clear on that?
I think so.
Okay, we're good with that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I believe, I think, I think so. All right. So we have a motion and a, Mr. Heim?
I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn.
Yeah.
One other thing. I just want to make clear that we're not issuing this RFP because we have to. We're issuing the RFP because we think it's a good practice. That's a really important distinction because when we're talking about licensing a property that one, that is not going to really be exclusively controlled, that's not going to be leased, because we're using it for different purposes, like the Porch Fest, and then like this, it's, has a slightly different dimension. I just want to make sure that folks, as you folks say, the millions, millions watching, understand that we're not vesting any permanent rights in anybody to this property, and that's, we're just issuing an RFP to try to get the best price, but also the best qual, I mean, to get the best quality bids, and then, you know, we'll see what people offer in terms of price as well.
Yeah, I definitely look at this as, when we did last year as a pilot, some of the concerns that people, other citizens had, both here in meetings and expressed privately, would be that we were, that the price we had set was too low, and our statement, to my statement then, and I think our collective statement was, "We're going to look at it, we're going to see how this year goes, and then we're going to look at it next year," and we collected a bunch of data, and this is us trying to find a more appropriate price setting mechanism. And so I think that's why we're, why we're here. Mr. Hurd, then, Adam.
Quick one. Just so I'm clear, so the 1,500 is not set, they're going to propose a figure that they'll pay us to use it?
That's a floor.
That's one time floor.
Even that's a floor, like you could bid more.
No.
So I was going to ask the board if, I think it's very straightforward what Mr. Kuro is proposing. I'm not necessarily comfortable having you approve it tonight until I can build out some language in terms of what Ms. Rowe recommended, so I'd, the board can do what it wants to do, but I would prefer to come back at the next meeting, having worked through Ms. Rowe's suggestion, so that it can be properly incorporated.
I'm happy to withdraw the motion.
All right. Okay. So then, I think then what we're doing is, this conversation is acting as guidance for Mr. Chaplaine for his next draft. Is there any further suggestions or thoughts?
No, just procedurally move to table?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Mahon to table. Any other thoughts before we table? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Table. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Next up, for approval, and establishment of gift account for Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture, Mr. Chaplaine.
So my name's there, but I think I see the two requesting parties, Adrienne and Stephanie here, so I suggest the chair ask them to come forward.
Welcome.
Welcome. Hello.
Could you introduce yourself? We know who you are, but not everybody does.
Yes. I'm waiting for my counterpart.
Yes.
So I'm Adrienne Arch. I am co-chair with Stephanie Marlin Kurial of the Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture. We've had a smashing, successful year, and thanks for hearing us out on this request for a fund into which people can make donations and where we can put money that we've raised through grants or money that we've sold from our website, advertising to be, it hasn't happened yet, but we are hoping to do that. So we'd like a place where we could put our money and some money that we don't get from the town that will not have to turn over at each fiscal year, so we're hoping that that will happen.
Mr. Kuro.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. I just have one question. What is the difference between this gift fund and the existing Public Art Fund?
Public Art Fund is for public art.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is for...
And this is for other, other activities in addition to...
Right. So people want to make a donation to the Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture, that's separate.
Okay.
Move approval to authorize the creation of a donation account?
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion by Mrs. Mahon, seconded by Mr. Kuro. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. That brings us to warrant article hearings. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight articles to hear tonight, and I will remind all participants that brevity is the soul of wit, and to also remind people about the process. So we do a public hearing for each one of these, so any one member of the public can speak to any one of these articles, and then the board generally will take a vote about our general direction, about what we are looking for our recommendation to be to town meeting, and then we will ask Town Council Doug Heim to write up the actual final language, and then we will approve that final language at a future meeting. Some of these hearings actually end up stretching out over a couple days. We try to dispose of as many of them as we can in a single hearing, just because of how many we've got and how many, or how few days we have between now and town meeting. Mr. Heim, is there any other preliminary statement?
Mr. Dunn, I'd just like to let you know that I put reference material on your desks that which are just copies of bylaws, as they're currently written, relevant statutes, a copy of your parking regulations for the purposes of cross-referencing if you think it's necessary. Otherwise, I think we're pretty much set to go.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm just looking to see which one, oh, here it is. Reference materials. Okay. First up is Article 28, right? Recycling Committee. And that one, I apologize, I do not have everything open yet, is a recycling committee recommended by the Recycling Committee. If you could introduce yourself and talk to us about your proposal, please.
Good evening. I'm Larry Slotnick, I'm co-chair of the Recycling Committee. And this is Priya Sankalia, she's co-chair with me. We have a longtime former co-chair here, Julie Brazil, and a former co-chair, Paul Goldberg's in the back. As you might know, Recycling Committee was formed in 1995, more than 20 years ago. A lot has happened in town since then. I think the committee was formed before there was curbside recycling, before there was a paid recycling coordinator who works for DPW, Charlotte Milan, and also before we enacted single stream recycling. What's going on now is that ideas about how solid waste is handled regionally and around the country are changing drastically. A lot of residents in town have participated in the monthly recycle centers that Charlotte Milan started about two years ago, where things that aren't allowed in your blue bin are collected. Tons of volunteers have worked at those recycling centers, and lots of residents have participated and dropped things off that are not allowed to go into a blue bin. Also, in the past year or so, things have changed internationally in terms of contamination that's found in typical blue bin, single stream recycling. So we feel, it's actually brought a lot of new interest in folks wanting to join the committee. That's one reason we're asking to expand the size of the committee from eight town residents to 10, as well as a change in our name from the Recycling Committee to the Zero Waste Advisory Committee. So as I mentioned before, what's going on with contamination in the widely accepted and popular single stream system has gotten people thinking that we really just need to have many fewer things going into the waste stream, whether it's the conventional trash that's picked up in your conventional trash cans or what goes into blue bins. We're following what's happening in many cities around us, including the city of Boston, which has created a Zero Waste Advisory Committee. Many towns have changed their recycling committees to either solid waste advisory committees or a Zero Waste Advisory Committee. So with the help of Doug, we've also made a few revisions to the purpose and mission statement that's found in the bylaw presently, to include the term zero waste and to expand a little upon what was written more than 20 years ago when that bylaw was enacted. That's kind of the...
Thank you.
Move approval?
Second.
I just, just a clarification, the committee of eight right now, if my memory's correct, is a committee of nine?
Correct.
Which, I think it's the town manager, his designee?
Yeah, which has been shared.
So it'll go from, you wanted to go to a committee of 11?
Yes, correct. From nine to 11.
Okay, thank, I just wanted to make sure we were keeping that straight. Is that your appointment?
Each other's, yes, yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
So my question on reading it was, so I'm in general totally in favor, was just, one, we've expanded two committees in the last couple of years through, and what I would describe as like an optional size increase, so the committee can both grow and shrink depending upon how it sees, and both times it's been through additional two members if the committee makes the vote, whereas the draft language we're looking at tonight says, you know, will be 10. Okay, did you think about, was that your conclusion?
Yeah, we're perfectly happy with having the language reflect something like that, that it could have eight to 10 town residents plus the managers' designee, absolutely.
Okay. I'm not like violently, I don't think it's a, it's an interesting idea that I thought worked for a couple other committees. I'm not sure necessarily it applies to yours. I'm just bringing it up for this quick sake of, I'm curious whether you talked about that or anything like that, or you just say, "We've got so many people, I know I'm going to fill the seats."
Well, there is a lot of interest, and our committee size actually does fluctuate. You know, we get occasional resignations, and then we'll have three additional people who come to our meetings but aren't able to actually be, become members because of the current cap or the current eight-person limit. So...
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from the board, comments? Anyone feel strongly about any of this?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to move it and replace...
Yeah, we got a motion already.
You got a motion, all right, okay.
You seconded it.
Been a long day already. We've got a lot to go. This makes reference to the Recycling Committee, and I think this is going to the bylaws to replace the Recycling Committee article. I don't know, would we typically say that, make a statement like that, that the Zero Advisory Committee replaces the Recycling Committee? Because once we put this article in, there probably won't be any reference to the Recycling Committee in the bylaws anymore. Right?
Mr. Kuro, given the timing of my submissions, I just didn't have the name yet, so I will go through and replace the name in all relevant sections.
Awesome.
All right. We've got a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, oh, actually, sorry, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else here who wants to speak on this issue? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, five-zero vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Article 29, Bylaw Amendment Regulation of Polystyrene Food Containers. And this one was...
It's recycling again.
It's recycling again, okay. Great. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jim Allen. I'm going to be co-presenting with Julie.
Hi, Julie Brazil, on the Recycling Committee. So the proposed bylaw would be to regulate polystyrene in Arlington. So I'm going to give it just a little bit of background. There are two kinds of polystyrene. There's the foam that can be a coffee cup or a soup cup, or the white foam takeout container. And then polystyrene can also be in a rigid plastic as a cup, like a solo cup, or, you know, a plastic plate of some kind or plastic utensils. And it's number six in the little triangle, PS, and then the number six is what we're talking about banning. So why ban polystyrene is the first question. Plastic is just a terrible kind of litter in general. We know there's huge masses of plastic floating in the ocean, and it breaks down into microplastics, and that gets into the food supply, and so there are sort of growing concerns internationally. So moving away from single-use plastics of all kinds is sort of a good goal, and we expect lots more communities will do things like Arlington did and ban single-use plastic shopping bags, but then all kinds of plastic containers and water bottles, you know, that will only grow over time. There are health reasons for banning polystyrene. It's made from styrene, which is listed as a carcinogen. So our goal with this bylaw would be to limit the use of the most dangerous form of plastic. For environmental reasons, it is both as the foam form and the rigid form, hard to recycle, often not recycled, has a very low value as a commodity, and so replacing the worst plastic that is the hardest to recycle with any better material, which is sort of a positive step forward. It would be better if all plastics were replaced with more sustainable products, compostable and biodegradable products, but that's a, that's a really big step, so we thought we would encourage this one small step. When we discuss the ban and provide suggested replacement products to retail stores and restaurants, we will encourage the use of biodegradable and compostable products, not... products, not plastics. But we aren't requiring that in the bylaw itself. To date, 31 towns in Massachusetts, towns and cities, have banned polystyrene. Everyone sort of does their own take on which products they ban, and how they ban them. Eight other states around the country do it, at various local levels. And there are countries that have banned it as well. So, it's sort of a growing international conversation. And we just think it's a practical step forward in Arlington to increase safety and sustainability.
So, I was here before you, two years ago, on the plastic bag ban. So, I just want to start out by saying, it's not my intention to ban something every two years. Don't be alarmed. I will take the Shakespeare to heart, and I'll keep this very brief. I'm just gonna go over just some of the details about what we're proposing, and how it would be implemented. You have a copy of the draft bylaw in your packet. This was modeled after the other 31 communities that have polystyrene product bans. So, we're not reinventing anything here. Of course, we'll work with town council on revising that language as necessary. Essentially, what the ban includes is all single-use disposable foam and polystyrene takeout containers, as well as polystyrene cups, plates, utensils, served at restaurants, and other establishments that have a food permit. Would also be prohibiting such items sold at retail, and also polystyrene packing, packaging peanuts. There's a few exemptions in the bylaw. Essentially, anything that's packaged outside of Arlington that comes in here would be exempt. And it's really, again, intended only for single-use disposable items. So, things such as, you know, insulation products, Styrofoam coolers, things that are not, not intended for single use, would be exempted. As far as implementation, the recycling committee is planning to do outreach to Arlington restaurants and businesses about the proposed ban, provide information sheets on alternative products, particularly those that are compostable, biodegradable, or recyclable. You have a list in your packet from the Town and Brookline that prepared such a information sheet, which we think is very helpful, and we would do something similar here, give businesses some information about alternative products that they can use. Also worth mentioning, we've already started working with the school department to help transition away from, help the schools transition away from polystyrene products. So, essentially, the impact in town, I think it's actually a much smaller impact than the plastic bag ban. It would specifically just apply to restaurants that, that use polystyrene products, as well as the few retail stores in town that sell such products. They would be, need to phase those products out, and provide suitable replacements. And it's also worth noting, there is, as Julie mentioned, there's some significant concerns about polystyrene products. The industry, I think, is moving away from that. In case you didn't see the headline last year, Dunkin' Donuts announced that they're getting rid of their foam cups, which is great, that should happen sometime next year. So, really, there are affordable alternatives that are becoming much more readily available. Enforcement would be very similar to the plastic bag ban. That would be through the Health Department. They would incorporate that into their routine food inspections. As also seen in your packet, the Health Director has already indicated that the Health Department is supportive of this. We are proposing effective date of January 1st, 2020. Health Department would have the authority to issue extensions due to financial hardship. And again, as with the plastic bag ban, we expect that primarily enforcement will be largely complaint-based, and an initial effort will primarily be on education, not penalties. So, with that, I want to just leave time for questions. I wanted to say last, one last word, which is, through my experience in dealing with the plastic bag ban a couple of years ago, we talked with a lot of retailers. And the vast majority of businesses that we talked to were very supportive about initiatives in town that reduce the impacts on the environment and public health. And what they simply wanted was, was a level playing field, which I think they're gonna get. So, we expect the response to be similar to this. Any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Mahan?
Just thinking of the different groups that I speak to, and to some of them, it's literally a civil liberty issue. I, a lot of people I've spoken to, because of where they are socio-economically, as well as physical makeup, have, you know, have said about the plastic ban, and I, but, you know, most of them, after they, a couple of years, seen it, have gone in, and see it's easier to do the, you know, you can buy the 99 cents reusable bags. But I got this question a lot. People saying, fine if the town wants to do that, but I still should have the right, and I'm assuming the answer is they will, I should still have the right that if I wanna go buy, at Stop &amp; Shop, at Trader Joe's, at Walgreens, a Styrofoam cup, will the businesses still be able to sell those? No.
So, the plan would be to ban it from retail stores. So, there would just be different products when you went to buy a cup. And if you can go to another town that doesn't ban it, but we assume that things like Styrofoam cups will fade out pretty quickly.
Ms. Rowe?
Do you know the cost comparison of the Styrofoam containers versus the recycled ones? Is it similar?
I think we haven't, we haven't done the research specifically yet. All of the handouts that are posted online from other communities that have done it, it's, it's a very tiny change in cost.
Okay. You know, I, I work in Boston, and I get my lunch every day in a non-Styrofoam container. So, I, I don't think it's gonna be a hardship. And I don't, I don't see that people wanna have the pride of owning a Styrofoam cup. I may be wrong.
No, no, if you, you know...
Yeah, I know, I know.
If you're a working guy or girl, and you're used to getting the solid dick, and you can buy forty of them...
Yeah, but if you go to Dunkin...
I'm just saying what was said to me, I'm just...
Yeah, yeah. If you go to Dunkin', and you get a cup that they give you, you're gonna end up liking that cup.
No, no, I would say, my question was, if people still wanted to buy, you know, 40 of them at a time?
Okay.
I thought the answer would be, they could still buy that, but the answer is no, they can't.
Right.
Mr. Mahan?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do believe that the bylaw that they're proposing, however, would not allow, I mean, the town wouldn't have the means to do this anyway. But if you ordered Styrofoam cups online...
Yeah, you wouldn't...
From Amazon...
You could get them.
You would be able to access them that way. They just wouldn't be in a local retailer, retailers. There would be options for folks who wanna make those purchases under what you've said. Is that correct?
Correct.
I don't use them in my house, because...
Oh, no, no.
I'm just saying that, you know, I'm not trying to make light of it, but people have said, you know, how come the town of Arlington, every time you turn around, you know, and their impression, and you, everyone knows where the places that we go, are like, you know, you're really kind of regulating my life a little too much. I was hoping the answer was going to be, if you did still wanna buy your 40, 50-pack, you know, cups with the lids, that work best for you, that you feel a little more durable, especially if you're in transportation, that they could. But the answer is no.
Ms. Hurd?
And am I hearing correctly, this didn't, so, if you go to the store and buy plastic cups, would this also be included in the ban?
If it's number six, polystyrene cup, yes.
But there are other plastic cups available that aren't number six?
There are. If you look at the, in the packet, there was that, that handout from Brookline. That includes a list of many different alternative products, including plastic cups, containers for takeout. And there's some pricing information in there as well.
Mike, oh, sorry, do you have a question?
Just one follow-up.
Oh, please.
So, I think it's clear in the proposed regulations, but, so, just a store like Stop &amp; Shop, this would apply to, like, the paper products aisle. It doesn't apply, they can't not buy food from any specific vendor because of the way it's packaged. It's just what people are buying for their own home consumption.
Right. It would not apply to any kind of packaged materials that the store stocks that, that they get from outside of Arlington.
And my other request was gonna be a Dunkin's exemption, but I guess Dunkin's already took care of that anyways.
Yeah, they're already doing it.
I'm not a big fan of the Cambridge Dunkin's cups, but I think they'll, they'll catch up with the times.
Yeah, it is worth noting, there's a number of neighboring communities, Cambridge, Somerville, that already have these bans. I believe Lexington's going to be voting on one this spring as well. I do think it's, it's going to probably become more common here as well.
Sure. Joe, do you have a question?
Oh, I see, okay. You specifically exempted, I see, prepackaged meat and produce trays, egg cartons, and other food and beverage products. But, okay, I, I knew I'd seen that somewhere. No, I'll just note that I was taking notice today, you know, I, where I work, we have a large dining hall and conference center business. I was going back to my desk with my lunch, and I had my, you know, sturdy plastic fork, and I turned it over, and it said compostable. So, presumably, it's from one of these, these lists here, so. Thank you.
I think I actually got my answer already for my question. Further questions or comments from the board?
So, did you say, did you speak with any business owners about this before submitting the article?
We got really big to do that, yeah.
Okay. Just to get a gauge on how they would react to it?
All right. Before, then I'm gonna invite anybody else from the public who wishes to speak to this issue. It is a public hearing. If you wish to speak to this issue, I see somebody with a raised hand, all the way in back. Come on up.
Hi.
Oh, could you come on up to the microphone? Welcome. Please introduce yourself. Please give us your name and what your relation is, and let us...
Well, I'm Laura Kiesel, so I was one of the original proponents of the plastic bag ban. So, I actually did go up and down to every, almost every store in Arlington Center and Capital Square, which is my neighborhood, when I did the plastic bag ban. So, even though that was my focus, I will say, most of the restaurants were already Styrofoam-free. There's only a couple I can think that may be a little resistant. In fact, a lot of them brought that up when I was asking about the plastic bag ban, and they were like, we love being Styrofoam-free. I remember Not Your Average Joe's, who actually did an endorsement of our plastic bag ban, talked a lot about being Styrofoam-free as our pizza, and several, and Monomy Tavern, too. And they, they were looking forward to doing the plastic bag ban as well. So, that, I just wanted to add that in, because I, when I did do research, I noted a lot of people were already Styrofoam-free, but I think it would be good to encode that into our municipality. And I also did some research this summer, the Green Restaurant Association, which does, certifies restaurants for sustainability all over the country. They're based in Boston, and they do have, like, comparisons. And I think it was the difference of about 10 or 12 cents for a container. And that's expected to go down as more of these bans go in place. So, I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here wish to speak on this issue at this hearing? I'm not seeing any. So, do we, discussion or motions?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion by Mrs., excuse me, Ms. Rowe, seconded by Mr. Kuro. Discussion.
I think what I'll say is, I, I support this. I think it will be helpful to list your assistance in doing a public education outreach campaign, preferably before a town meeting, and before we have this, this discussion at, at town meeting. I mean, I think on the, the environmental merits, it makes sense. But that, that is a discussion that's very important to have.
I've changed my mind. It's also important from a human point of view, because the use of these chemicals, I was exercising, as I do every weekend, listening to NPR, and they had an incredible segment on the use of plastics and how it's getting into our bodies. I would think that, not just environmentally, but our own human body's environment would want this kind of thing. And I, I understand, it's like being lead light bulbs are being pushed on us, and, you know, there are lots of changes that are happening. But these are ones to help us as human beings, and help the environment. So, I think it's, you know, it's a change, and it's hard. And I don't know that I'm gonna like the Dunkin' cup either, because I'm used to it. But I'm gonna try it.
I should say, it's not the cup, it's the lid.
[laughter]
Dunkin's are just lazy, and they just use the same lids that they have when they're small. So, I think it's a pretty simple fix. But...
I went out, we're bad at this end, I'm sorry. My only thing, I'm, I'm willing to vote for this and move forward, understanding that, you know, if something arises, we can address that along the way. And I'm not being sarcastic or anything. The only way I wouldn't vote for this is if the chairman had any, I'm just thinking of, I don't wanna say civil liberties for a Styrofoam, but you know what I'm saying? Like, I'm, I'm just wondering where you're falling on this.
I think where I'm falling on this is, that I actually think that town, this is, this is one of those things where we can make whatever recommendation we want, and town meeting is gonna do whatever it wants. And which, and I think that our recommendation is gonna carry probably five votes. Like, you know, like, just because...
On a good day, on a good day.
And because, and I don't, and so, and like, do I think, and I think that, from an environmental perspective, I think it is justified, and it makes sense to me. And so therefore, as a town meeting member, provided I'm re-elected, I'm on the ballot in precinct 21 this, this spring, and I have lost before, so I may lose again. That's right.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Rowe, seconded by Mr. Kuro. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of recommending a vote of positive action on this, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Doug, you got some writing to do. Got it. All right. Thank you. Next up, Article 33, Notice of Demolition. And this one, if I, my memory serves, was a 10 registered voter article. I'm looking because my memory is not perfect.
Elizabeth Pyle.
Yeah. Is, Ms. Pyle, are you?
I don't see Ms. Pyle.
Is she here?
She's not here. Did she tell me that, did she tell me that...
Is there anyone of the other 10 signatures to talk about the demolition article?
Mr. Dunn?
Mr. Mahan?
I think Mr. Kripelka has some news on this.
When I talked to Sky, she told me that Jenny Ray would take care of it at her meetings with the zoning bylaws.
At who would, sorry?
Jenny Ray.
Oh.
Would take care of it under the zoning bylaws.
I'm not sure why that would be the case.
Because they didn't, they, she submitted it with 10 registered voters.
Yeah. I believe this recommendation comes out, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
Thank you. I believe this recommendation comes out of discussions within the residential study group. So, that, from that perspective, that may be where there's some disconnect. Nonetheless, this is a change to the town bylaws, the notice of its demolition delay, to essentially include trees and tree plans in what gets noticed to neighbors. So, something that would trigger the tree bylaw would also now trigger the notice of demolition delay, as I put in my memo. But if, if there's a miscommunication, I'm, I just wanna make sure that it's, it's clear that we're not necessarily representing that Ms. Pyle didn't wanna come or anything like that.
Ms. Mahan?
Should I make a motion to table, so we can clear up this confusion? And then, if it truly doesn't have to be before us, then it doesn't. And if it does, we can reschedule. So, motion to table?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Kuro. Yeah. There's nobody here who was ready, prepared to speak to this, right?
No.
Not seeing anyone. All those in favor of tabling, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is tabled. Article 34, Bylaw Amendment Regulation of Outdoor Lighting's Dark Skies bylaws. Mr. Schlickman?
Good evening, my friends. Six years ago, a certain element of bliss entered my life, when the town completed the conversion of all the street lighting to, to LED. And all of a sudden, all this orange glow, or most of the orange glow that permeated my eighth-floor bedroom vanished. Six years ago, town replaced all the streetlights in town. However, the lighting that was not under direct control of town did not change. And if I sat up in bed, when it was dark, I'd have this spotlight, this orange spotlight, hitting me in the eye, from two blocks away, casting an orange glow in my bedroom. So, I went and did some research, and proposed five years ago, a bylaw change, to impose a dark sky ordinance on Arlington. The previous lighting bylaw only applied to residential properties. So, if you put a light above your garage, and it shined in your neighbor's bedroom window, they could call the building inspector. Building inspector can come out, take a look at it, see if there's a problem, get it fixed. But did nothing for any other kind of light. So, I came up with a proposal to bring in the other light, on commercial, industrial, and basically anything that was not residential. And it was good, and the town meeting happily passed it. And it was good and the town meeting happily passed it. This morning, when I woke up, that same orange light is still staring me in the eye. We have a good bylaw, but it's proved to be ineffective and unenforceable. We are a great town, we do great things, but if that light is still on five years later, shining in my bedroom window, it means there's a clear deficiency in the bylaw that's making it unenforceable. So going back to the prior research and looking at the model ordinance by the International Dark Sky Association, which has basically been adopted by Acton and Milton, I went to take the components of the article that I brought forth five years ago that was edited out as a compromise and sort of putting it back in so we now have an enforceable bylaw. So what I'm asking for town meeting to do this year, hopefully with your blessing, is to do a couple of things. One, we would prohibit the use of mercury vapor, high pressure sodium and metal highlight bulbs. Those are the bright, glaring energy dogs that we replaced. Two, restoring the definitions that were proposed in the article five years ago so that there's a clear definition of what a luminaire, shielded luminaire and requirements for uplighting are. Three, eliminating the requirement of a citizen complaint in order to proceed with enforcement for non-residential. If your neighbor puts up a light that's bothering you, that still requires a complaint. Anything else that is a violation, the town can go after. Four, designating our electric utility, Eversource, is accountable for lighting under its control. Much of this lighting is owned and leased by Eversource. So that if there's a penalty being paid right now, who do we go after? Under the terms of this bylaw, we could say, hey, Eversource, these lights violate the bylaw, go change them. If not, we're going after you. And five, most of these lights are on town property.
Sorry. Sorry. I got so excited. So, sorry.
Most of these lights are on town property. They are on utility poles that are on town easements. If the utility wants to come along at the request of a private customer and tack up a light on a utility pole on town property, they have to come here for a permit. Hopefully that will discourage them from going mounting off-site lighting, which is throwing the glare. And the glare is a significant issue. And I'll tell you, I'm getting a little older. I was old, I'm older now than I was when I got into town meeting in 1992. Those big spotlights that are glaring down the street, they make night vision more difficult for older drivers and maybe even some of the non-older drivers. So that what you want to do is you want to minimize the light pollution, you want to minimize the glare, and you want more energy efficient green lighting in town. And it can be done. I mean, Art Strong Ambulance did a beautiful job of lighting their parking lot. I live right next door to them, can't see a drop of light coming in from them. But two blocks away, over on, over on the other side of the Knights of Columbus is that big glaring light in my bedroom window, which is doing nothing to light the neighborhood, but it's lighting the house across the street and it's shining my bedroom window. So for these reasons, I hope you will give your blessing to tightening this bylaw, coming up with a bylaw that's enforceable and one that we can get rid of these orange glowing prison lighting that is shining onto other people's property and onto town byways.
Thank you. Mr. Mahan?
I have a question. The five points that you enumerated, do you have like an extra, sometimes we have that reference material in?
It's in the packet. And I can, you know, it, yeah, it's, it was submitted last week, it's in your...
Okay, as long as, I didn't see it, I'm sorry. Yes, there it is.
First page is a nice picture of that spotlight.
I was on the town council report. There it is, everybody.
There it is, yeah. That thing is in my bedroom window, two blocks away.
Ms. Rowe?
Well, I know that the town has a wonderful record of getting our public utilities to do what we ask them to do. So I'm wondering if the town manager could comment on how successful we might be with Eversource and/or other utilities that might be.
So I, I'll, I'll, Mr. Chair, if I may. So I'll respond, but then also defer to town council. I think of everything that Mr. Schlickman has proposed, the, creating the accountability for Eversource is probably the most challenging from a practical point of view, and I would guess from a legal point of view, but I, you, Doug and I have not discussed that.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
So from the perspective of requiring them to get a permit, the issue becomes then probably catching them doing work without a permit because in my experience, they just kind of do stuff. They don't generally tend to come before you and ask permission unless it's been deeply ingrained in them. I mean, if the town passes a bylaw that requires us to, you know, take, you know, step up action relative to a utility, we'll do so to the best of our abilities. I just, it is important to have expectations be somewhat tempered by the fact that it is, we don't have, and I want to put this diplomatically, you don't want, I want to put it diplomatically.
I was going to say, doesn't want, I'm waiting.
We don't have a readily, I don't know that we have a readily identifiable dance partner in the state for something like this. So it's just something to be aware that, that, you know, the onus would fall upon us to really work.
I know that, and I don't think that Arlington is any different from any other of the 350 municipalities in the Commonwealth. And it's, it's an exercise in frustration. I know we've been trying to get rid of double poles, there are a number of utility issues. And I, I commend you for bringing this bylaw forward. I plan to vote for it.
Thank you.
I think the night sky movement to protect our wonderful wildlife and all our eagles and things are, are important step forwards. I just, it's, it's very frustrating working with utilities, that's all. And I just, I don't want you to get your hopes up.
Well, I would think a non-compliant light would be prima facie evidence that they've got something to say there without a permit.
Yeah.
Mr. Kuro?
Thank you. I was looking at that seat. I, I am going to assume that nobody, either Mr. Schlickman or town manager has this answer, but maybe you do. Any estimate of how many of these types of lights are installed around town on poles that are in the public way or on public easements that are, you know, the criteria that'll sit here, but are illuminating something other than the public way? Do you have any sense?
Probably a dozen or two.
Just a dozen or two?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's probably becoming more and more a limited number because when bulbs die, the technology has advanced such that the cost of an LED light is, is competitive and the energy savings you get is very competitive. So I, I think that the changeover has been happening, but...
No, I'm actually talking about, it's, it's C in, in Mr...
Or just the existence of light, any light.
Any lighting affixed to a utility pole placed on town property on the public right-of-way or easement in which the purpose of the luminaires to illuminate areas outside the public right-of-way or easement shall be subject to a permit by the select board. So I, I guess there are, there are lights that are on some of the tele, the utility poles that are not pointing at the public way, they're not serving as street lighting, they're serving as lighting for other pieces of property.
Yes, none of these lights are street lighting for the town. The town has converted all of its lighting to lighting that conforms to the bylaw. For example, the light I'm complaining about over on Winslow is on a utility pole on, on the town right of way.
Yeah. And I'm just thinking that, that, that there arises a question as to which utility is actually getting the permit from us, right? If it's, Eversource is providing electricity, but it's a Verizon pole, right?
Well, Eversource is getting the money for it. They go, you contract with Eversource, you call up Eversource and say, hey, I want one of these things, can you put it on the pole across the street from my house?
Right.
Yeah.
One of the things, as Adam has said, the metal halide lamp fixtures are going out of business. I mean, the lead lights are much less expensive and they last much longer and so eventually they will all be lead lights. But, you know, you just have to wait until the bulb, bulb goes out.
Eversource, at least their Connecticut branch, I researched their whole website, they will offer to go and convert any fixture to an LED light at the request of the customer. But if, if not, they'll just keep on maintaining what they have.
Move approval? Second.
Motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Ms. Rowe. I see Mr. Heim raised his hand. He didn't pass.
Excuse me.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak to this issue? Welcome. If you could introduce yourself and...
Thank you very much. My name is John Sanbonmatsu and it's the first I've heard of this issue. And all I want to say is I, I support it and I think it's, it's really important to understand what's happening to animals in our community and other communities. Half of all the animals on the earth, 60% have died in the last 40 years. We're wiping out all the animals on the earth. Light pollution is interfering with the metabolism of a variety of animals, including, for example, fireflies, blue, you know, bluebirds. I don't, actually I don't know if we have bluebirds here, but in the mid-Atlantic states, that's a big problem. So anyway, I just wanted to say, thank you for bringing that loophole to our attention. I hope the select board will approve it. Thanks.
Mr. Kuro?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be supporting the motion also. I mean, I'm sympathetic to this. We had an issue, it wasn't with this technology, but up at Sims with the redevelopment project, right after that went in inadvertently, the incorrect lighting fixtures were placed. And I know Mr. Byrne had worked extensively with the, the group up there first to provide shading, but then it was discovered that, that the lighting was, was, it was not, not to specification and it was a real issue with, with Butters. So I, I'm sympathetic to the issue here, so let's, let's put it before town meeting and see, see where we go.
I'll say, the thing, the, I like the, I definitely don't want people in town to be frustrated by lights that are in them, like the, like the, like the, what do you call it? Harass, harassing is maybe a strong word, but certainly frustrating lights. And I definitely appreciate the environmental issues as well, and so I am going to support it. I will say that it, I do find it frustrating that we haven't been able to find a solution to your specific problem in a timely fashion because it feels to me like this is, most of the time, I think if I, we, when we get to a hearing like this, I say, let's figure out the other way to solve it. But in this case, because there are other benefits, I'm going to support it. But it, it just, it grinds me that we didn't, that we haven't been able to get there on this one, separate from that. So is there anyone else from the public? No one's raising their hand. Any further discussion? We have a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Ms. Rowe, to support Mr. Schlickman's motion, or proposal, as recommended for it. And so this time, for the first time of all of our discussions, Mr. Heim, do you have enough direction from us to write or do you have questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think I'm all set.
All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Five zero. Thank you, Mr. Schlickman. Next up, Article 40, Vote, Robyn's Library Parking Cost. This one is also a 10 registered voter article. Welcome. Could you introduce yourself and talk about your proposal?
Thank you. My name is Andrew Fisher. Let's see. Just like to say that the article will be restated as a resolution when it get further along. One of the reasons I personally like to sing songs like the National Anthem, America the Beautiful, or This Land is My Land, This Land is Your Land, is that I'm proud of the fact that we strive for an ideal of an egalitarian society, equal treatment for all. We live this in our education system, sports, Title IX, and public access in general, especially to public buildings. Therefore, to have a parking arrangement at the public library where the most convenient parking is available for those who can afford a dollar an hour is simply wrong, in my opinion. And those who cannot afford a dollar an hour cannot afford it. This notion is elaborated extensively in the Library Bill of Rights established by the American Library Association. Some of the quotes on the page where this is presented is, quote, "The publicly, the publicly supported library provides free and equitable access to information for all people of the community the library serves." Pardon me?
You probably, you, you may be bumping the mic with your paper and I think that's all you're getting in the sound.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you able to get the...
I could hear you, but the people at home probably couldn't.
Another quote is librarians and governing bodies should look for alternative models and methods of library administration that minimize distinctions among users based on their economic status or financial condition. Another quote is charging fees for library collections, services, programs or facilities, I would think parking facilities or facility, reinforces distinctions among users based on their ability and willingness to pay. One might argue that some of the languages in the Bill of Rights only pertains to the collection itself, but I think the overall message of this document is, is clear. So I wanted to bring this up for discussion. My belief is that ideally, there could be validated parking, but at, at worst, we could go back to the old system of marking tires and actually enforce it. Maybe it wasn't being enforced, I don't know why. I know the folks at the UU church where I attend say, people did park in the half-hour parking all day, there's no doubt. But at the same time, as I've talked with you, I experienced having to, back in the day when there were marking tires, I, I did the job on the corner, near the corner of Mass Ave and Mill Street, the tiny house at 6 Mill. And I had to talk with the guy, it was great, he was friendly. But that, that system existed, so this, that's the long and the short of it. So thank you.
Mrs. Mahan?
I'm not sure how the board wants to proceed on this. It's my understanding it's going to be a resolution because this is not a town meeting action, it would be the select board with the aid of recommendations from the town manager or the parking subcommittee, I'm going to say the name wrong. So I'm not sure how everybody wants to go. If we, if we vote no action, because it has to be a resolution, we can get a will of town meeting, but it's ultimately the select board. If, if myself or someone makes a motion to support the resolution, because we'd like to hear, you know, what the majority of town meeting says, so I guess those would be the two options? Is there anything else we can do? I mean, I, I, my sense is I'd like to hear what town meeting says on this when it comes as a resolution. I'd be happy to make a motion to support the resolution because that's the only form it can be in. I'm just, my procedure...
So are you tabling it?
No.
Until it's a resolution?
Oh, well, we have the power to just do it as a, we can, we can make a recommendation to town meeting as we see fit.
Okay.
So I, does anyone, I'll make that motion for discussion and then see what, if someone wants to second it and see how, I'm, I, I'll go what the will of the board wants to do.
Second of a discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Kuro, then Mr. Heim.
So my understanding is that, and I understand, I understand what motivates you and I think that the, the values you articulated here around access to the libraries, I'm completely with you, Andrew.
Thanks.
But my understanding is that, that when we went through the whole process of implementing the meters, that there was actually extensive discussion with the library board of trustees, who obviously are, that is their mission, is to, 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 to provide access to the, to the library as well. And I, my, my recollection is that their judgment was that this was actually providing more access to, to the library by implementing the system because it was providing a way to, to, to ensure that there was turnover of, of those spots. Well, because as you rightly said, you know, people were parking there all day as, as commuters, so then no one could, no one could get in and park nearby. And we didn't have that, that type of turnover. A lot of the meters there do have the 15-minute free parking, not all, not all admittedly, but a lot, a lot of them do, if they're... Not all, not all admittedly, but a lot of them do if they're a quick spot. So I think that whatever we were to do, I mean, I'm reaching back to a few years ago when we did this. I mean, I'd love to have the Library Board of Trustees weigh in on this in some way, shape, or form, whether that's going forward with the resolution and asking them to wait before town meeting, or whether it's tableing this and asking for either the library director or the library trustees to come back and kind of explain the justification and their point of view and how this, these measures impact library access. I mean, that's something I'd want to understand. But my, my recollection is that the intent really was to increase access to the library. And I understand that there's the financial aspect, but it's, it's not there to make a profit for the town. As a matter of fact, we've got Parking Benefit District that actually plows things right back into the district.
I think what you're saying makes per-
Andrew, sorry, hang on. I'm going to let everyone up here, too. I'll give you another crack in a minute. John.
So I was on the PIGC when we talked about this, and the town manager can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think when we initially were going through the metering system, we did not have the library lot.
That's correct.
We weren't even considering putting meters in the library lot, and the library approached us and said, oh, we heard you're putting meters on the street. It's going to be a nightmare in the parking lot if there's meters on the street, unmeted in the library lot. So it was actually at the direction of the library that we even included that in our consideration. And based on the data in the Arlington Center Parking Study that we had, it was clear that if we left that unmeted and put meters on the street, there was going to be, you would never be able to find a parking spot in the library lot. And I don't know what the, if it was fifteen or thirty-minute parking was there before, but just from an enforcement standpoint, you could talk to the parking enforcement officers, but they're all in loops, and I think it would be very difficult to take one of those officers and even enforce a fifteen or thirty-minute parking in that area, because they'd have to just keep, keep coming back. So I think it works very well as it is. And so because it's the kiosk, there's no fifteen minutes free in that particular lot, correct?
So the head-in parking spaces right across from the entrance to the library have the fifteen minutes free, but in the lot itself, you're correct, there's no fifteen minutes free?
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Rowe?
Have you talked to the library trustees?
No, and I think it makes eminent sense to table it and wait for that to happen.
I'm eventually going to do that, but I didn't see a motion coming to be seconded so we could have the conversation. So that's why, I just want to.
I would note, I mean, I find it inconvenient, too. I'm at the library all the time, but we're not actually unusual in this. And I know that Watertown, for sure, Lexington, for sure, has metered spots behind the building too, and I assume it's for similar reasons, too, to allocate it and make sure that people can get in and.
Does anyone, do you happen to know what the library trustees' meetings, I am unfamiliar with their regular schedule.
When do they meet?
Yeah.
It is on Tuesday evenings, but I could look up quickly when their next meeting is.
I think that'd be helpful. Thank you. Ms. Rowe?
We already have one motion, yes?
When the chair says right, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay.
And then I'll make a motion to table it until Andrew has a chance to talk to the library trustees.
Second.
I certainly will.
We will be.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mahon.
Doug, sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yep.
If it's going to be tabled, it would be useful to have a resolution, because for the select board to sort of vote to support a resolution, I think in some ways what's at least occurring at this moment is saying it'd be valuable to have this discussion, but I don't know that there's a suggestion that the select board itself has a specific position on the resolution as much as just saying, well, maybe we could have a fruitful discussion at town meeting about it. Does that make sense? So if we table it, it'd be nice to also table it with maybe some direction to come back with a draft resolution?
Got it.
Thank you.
Two things, Mr. Chair. The Library Board of Trustees meets tomorrow night, and then again on March 12th, so it looks like they're meeting on two, every month on the consecutive Tuesdays there, or every, on a Tuesday. To the point of the resolution, I suppose, I mean, after hearing feedback from the Board of Trustees, if the board, the select board didn't want to have parking anymore, there'd be no, paid parking, there'd be no need for a resolution. It's this board's discretion, so just to be clear, I don't know that that would be-
That's what, yeah.
So I'll actually, so I haven't weighed in on this one yet, and I am, I do consider this a settled issue, and I don't feel the need to bring it back up. If there was a motion to recommend no action, I would support it, but if it's the will of the board to get more input before we do that, then, then we can do that. If the board, the library trustees is persuaded and they want to ask us to change, to take them out, I would absolutely listen to the library trustees. If the library trustees said, you know, I want to hear what town meeting says, then I would do that, but other than that, I feel like we know what our answer, or I know what my answer is, and the answer, and the answer is I want to do what the Library Board of Trustees is, and I'm satisfied with that. I don't feel the need to put it before town meeting. I don't think it's an appropriate question for them. So that's my two cents on where we are. It's more than two cents.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think when we've had similar situations like this, where we've been asked to consider a resolution, to ask town meeting to tell us to do something, typically we've said, well-
Just do, ask us, yeah.
Just ask us to do it, and, and what we would do then is schedule a public hearing, and that's where you get the feedback, and you take the action, or you don't take the action at that point. But I don't know, I mean, but I'm also, I'm open to formulations, so I like to hear what the other-
So I know you have a motion to table, I apologize, Mr. Hurd, I cut you off.
Yeah, yeah, but I'd like to hear what the other members of public at this hearing have to say on it, too.
I apologize.
Yep.
Mr. Hurd?
Can I ask one question, at the risk of opening a can of worms? Does that kiosk have the ability to take not just a credit card, like a town-issued card?
Yes.
Do we have those?
I don't know that we have any, but we could, we could get some.
Because it'd certainly be worth-
Library card?
Well, it would be worth, I mean, I think some of the concerns are residents that want to use the library that might not particularly be able to afford the parking fees, but if we could explore some sort of program where, based on income or, you know, resources, someone might qualify to be issued a card with, I wouldn't say an unlimited balance, but say a yearly stipend of a hundred dollars or something like that, just in the future, I think something that might be worth discussion.
All right. Are there members of public who wish to speak on this issue? Welcome. If you could introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Lynette Martin, resident of Arlington. I just didn't know this was coming up today, but I have talked to many other moms and parents like myself who find the new library parking situation very frustrating. While I do appreciate that in the past, there has not been parking because they have not enforced it, and people have abused the situation, I think it's particularly frustrating that they're all over town, all the rest of the parking meters, for the most part, have the free fifteen minutes, which I don't need anywhere except for the library. The free fifteen minutes of parking would be incredible at the library, because I oftentimes only need fifteen minutes at the library to go in and return or take out books. Also, I have been, I think, at least once, maybe twice, ticketed for being like less than five minutes over, which, I mean, I don't know if there's any sort of grace around that, it's the free fifteen minutes on the side, but it just seems to me that there is someone monitoring quite often, so there should be a way to monitor if someone is in the parking lot abusing the situation. If it wasn't monitored in the past, it would be great if we could monitor it moving forward. But it seems like this is going to the library board, which makes sense, and I hope they will listen to this recording. Thank you.
I guess, I'll say, I actually don't, I think that enforcement can be the same, regardless of whether there's meter or not. I think that the question is more about the fact that it's a scarce resource, and you're going to have people who park first at the library, because it's the free location, and it's just going to fill it up. And so that's why I, yeah. In fact, I'm probably sticking, I'm even going to stick to my guns, and I'm voting no on the table, just for the, because I'm, I feel like this is a settled issue and I'm ready to move on. But, now, count to three, so here, there you go. We have a motion to-
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Sorry, yep, Ms. Rowe.
There's some public-
I apologize, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Susan Mortimer, and I hadn't planned to speak about this, but I'm so happy the gentleman came up. I think that the greatest American institution is the public library, and I thank Benjamin Franklin for that. It's a free and public institution where anyone can come in, no matter of income or transportation, and spend a day, an hour, using all the resources and making community there. And though I don't use a car to get there anymore, I was flabbergasted when I saw parking meters in the lot. I always assumed it was town. And for townspeople to have to pay to go into a free and public library is really jarring. It doesn't, it doesn't look good. As someone who did use a library all the time when her children were very young, I don't recall ever getting out of the library in fifteen minutes. That, you know, your children would be crying that they don't want to leave, it's a wonderful place to be, and to be able to stay there with your children is something that you pass on to them. I also, there was a suggestion about some kind of pass or ticket if people were low income. Given that this is a public institution that's free and accessible, certainly if I were, I wouldn't want to have to show a card to go to the library that said that I was of a particular income level. So anyway, whatever happens, I just want to say it's really jarring when you go into the library and see that people need to pay. It just doesn't, it just doesn't kind of mesh with a public institution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public input on this particular article? Mr. Hurd?
I just have a question. I don't know if you know the technology on the kiosk itself. Do we have the ability on that kiosk to generate a free fifteen-minute ticket? You know, on the regular meters, you hit any button, you, it feeds a fifteen minutes, but do we have the ability to, to program that same option? I know it would have to generate a ticket, but-
I'd have to investigate. I'm not sure. I mean, from a technological point of view, it sounds doable, but-
Yeah.
You have to see if they have that ability.
I'd just be interested to know. I know it probably opens a can of worms elsewhere, but-
Uh, we, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay. In back, do you want to come on up and speak? Welcome, please introduce yourself.
My name is Rose Utix, and I didn't intend to speak on this issue either. I agree that the fifteen-minute free time does not really exist in the parking lot, and the idea of a validated parking ticket or something for legitimate library users is something that should be considered, so that if you're there to do research for more than fifteen minutes, or you're there with your kids, you could go to the desk and show your library card, and you could clock in and clock out that way. And there may be a mechanism for getting around some of the time restraints, constraints for people who really do need the library and would have access to it for the period of time that they need it. And, and that would rule out a lot of commuters who can't get into the library before nine o'clock anyway, so if they need to be somewhere downtown after that, it would cut down on the number of people trying to get around that regulation in that manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm William Brooks Harrelson, and I wasn't planning on speaking about this either, but I'm a technologist, I'm sitting here thinking of solutions, and I really liked Mr. Hurd's solution about a card that could be used. It could be held at the reference desk, traded for a library card, to be taken out for a one-hour fee, brought back to the library desk to retrieve your card. It would be very simple. Personally, I'd never use it. I'd pay the fee rather than making that trip twice.
Yeah, that's what you mean. Okay, so I think we beat this.
We have gone for a while on this one.
Just one, one quick correction, sort of. I said I hadn't made a presentation to the board, to the Library Board of Trustees, but I would like to say I do have one person I've been talking with who is on the board, who has made it clear that, given the experience of three years, that they would look at it, not for a black-and-white solution, but to find a better way.
Okay.
That's all.
So knowing that the library trustees is not going to be able to talk about this tomorrow, that they're, they're going to be talking about it on March 12th, was it 12th? Something, yeah, March 12th. And we're trying to go to print, somewhere around there. We've got a motion to table?
Motion to table means it's gone unless we bring it back in some form.
Yeah, though I suspect we'll feel obligated to-
No, that's if we do motion to postpone, then we do a time certain. Motion to table means it's off.
However, as we get closer to preparing the report, I will remind the board that it's awkward if there's something that we haven't made a recommendation on.
Okay, well, I'll make a different motion, okay.
All right, no, let me just say, all right. We've got a motion from Mrs. Rowe, seconded by Mrs. Mahon, to table. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Or is one vote?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck with the library trustees. Next, you know what, actually, it is nine twenty-two, we've been going for two hours. I am going to call a six-minute recess. Six-minute, because five isn't long enough, but ten is too long.
Okay.
So, six, nine twenty-eight, we'll be back.
Ms. Brown?
Patience, we don't often have a break in our meeting, but this one is definitely one of our, our longer stretches than we've, than we usually do. Next up, so we've got three left. Article forty-four, Home Rule Legislation, CPA Search Charge Exemption for Senior Homeowners. This was, if I remember correctly, a home rule petition from Mr. Rudosia. Paul, if you could introduce yourself and talk about your article.
Bob Rudosia, Precinct eleven, Columbia Road. Is that enough? Okay. I was asked to present this after many discussions with elderly people in town, and it really came to a point recently when they received their last tax bills, and some of them were saying, I didn't know Proposition two and a half override already took place. They got whacked big time. You know, we're talking fifteen, twenty percent increases in assessments and everything else. They're all talking now about how can I continue to live in Arlington? I'm not sure I can stay here anymore. I can't afford it. And we talked about some things, what can they do? There's no way they can give us anything, but there's the one thing, and, you know, the CPA is not a tax, it doesn't have anything to do with the operating budget of the town, and it's a way of, can we do something to let them opt out of it? It's not a big deal, but now with the recent assessments going up twenty percent, twenty-five percent, that's another chunk that gets added on to CPA indirectly. And so I'm not sure how we could go about doing it, but I'd like to at least give you an opportunity to help me, help these people find a way to do something, because nothing's coming back to them the other way. They've got this, this thing already, and then the override, the school, we want the school to go, and now they think they got their two and a half already, and I've seen it myself, you know, sixteen, eighteen percent. So I'm not sure where this sits, Doug, and what do we have to do?
So I just want to correct one thing about, without talking about the merits of the article, in terms of the tax increase, I think there were, this particular set of tax bills, there's some confusion about it. So the net new, on average, the net new increase in taxes in town was something over four percent for new growth. Then there was another percent or so that went to the people, sorry, four and a half percent for existing, and there was another percent that was for new growth. And so some households had lar, some homes had large increases, some were between ten, fifteen, and twenty, but also I want to be clear that the average was four and a half, and there are some thousands of households who actually have lower tax bills this year. And so I just want to, because that's a misconception that I think is really important.
Well, it's not to those that got it.
For the ones who got it, it's a big deal.
Okay, they got it, and say, why me? I didn't do anything to the house. Why did this thing change the way it did? All right? They're the ones, they feel it, they feel it.
I just want to be sure that we're-
One-third of the single-family homes received anywhere from ten to thirty percent increase.
So long as we're clear on what the average is, thank you.
Okay.
All right, now I'm ready, I'm ready to move on.
The reality is, what does it feel like when I have to write that check if I don't have the money?
I just, I'm happy to move on, thank you, Bob. I'm happy to move on, I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same factual ground there.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Rowe, now that I started.
One of the things, when we adopted CPA, there were certain restrictions on the adoption-
One of the things, when we adopted CPA, there were certain restrictions on the adoption. One was that both residential and commercial taxes were, the first $100,000 was taken off. There's also a senior income, you know, circuit breaker for anybody that meets the criteria. So the low income is one thing. If you're a senior, low to medium income, you also get some break on that. Now, maybe some of the senior people that you're talking to haven't gone to claim, they haven't looked into the senior exemption, but they should look into it.
Okay. We've talked about that.
So, Bob, hang on. We're going to let, do everybody, then I'll, we'll give you a go. If she has a direct question for you, then we'll bring that, that...
Right. But I think that one of the things that's better about CPA now is that they have listened to make sure that the seniors are taken into account. I'm a senior myself. I understand what you're saying. I'm still working, but I'm not going to be working forever. And it's, it's a lot of money, and I want the high school rebuilt, and I want to keep the town on a firm financial basis. But I also think that CPA has done wonderful things for the town and continues to do wonderful things for the town. So I won't be voting for this, as you can imagine. You're not surprised.
Mr. Kira.
So I want to make sure that it's clear that the board has actually asked for two other relief programs to be included in the warrant this year, which probably, I, I think would have a lot bigger impact than what, what's proposed here. One of them is a senior circuit breaker, which, which we have not yet had the hearing on yet. And I know the analysis is ongoing on that. So that, that would be a much, have a much bigger impact as far as tax relief goes. But the other, you know, you mentioned that, that folks who are in a real situation are those whose assessments have gone up, but they don't have the money available to, to actually pay the, the increase. You know, we, we asked to place on the warrant, it's actually the second, second part of something the town meeting already initiated last year, two years ago, which would allow people to leverage that extra value in the, in the home. Because the assessment's going up because the value's going up, right? So the ultimate sale value. So to be able to defer the, the taxes and actually leverage against the value and not have it be out-of-pocket expense. So that, that's actually coming up on, we haven't had that, those, that hearing yet. That'll be coming up in upcoming weeks. But I think that both of those probably would, would be more straightforward than trying to determine like, have you lived here 10 years? Like, I, I actually have some issues also with the criteria here that are proposed, where have you lived here 10 years, but there's not a need, a need-based, you know, criterion. So I, I think that those, those two probably have a lot more promise to provide a greater amount of, of relief to seniors here. So that, that's kind of where I'm at. So I'm actually probably going to vote against this, this proposal, just because I, I think that, for the amount of benefit it would provide against the, the administrative burden to, to, to make that determination, have you lived here, how much, and how do you deal with, you know, non-resident homeowners, and do they get that, that relief, et cetera? I'm not sure. So that, that's kind of where I'm at.
Mr. Hurd?
I just say, not to reiterate, but I think that while it's certainly a good endeavor to try to relieve the increases on taxes on seniors, and we're asking a lot of seniors and people that might not specifically be using what the tax increases will go towards, such as the high school. And, you know, I really would, I would support any efforts to try to help alleviate that burden. But I think in this particular circumstance, it's duplicative of what is already written in the CPA because of where it exempts the people based on income guidelines. And so...
Thank you. Mrs. Mahan?
Just because of procedurally, because this is, and you're trying to start somewhere. And I'm totally with that. I get it. And just the process-oriented person that I am, in terms of CPA, if this is something that was done, it really wouldn't be done correctly this way. My thing is, we went into CPA with a ballot question. If we wanted to change it, or modify it, or eliminate it, this doesn't accomplish that, number one. So I'm going to move no action. But number two, just because of the tenants that I advocated for the Community Preservation Act, when we did have this discussion, put it on the ballot, and heard from the voters, I have a philosophical, I have a process procedural and I have a philosophical. So I would move no action. And then if I could just make one more comment.
Is there a second for Mrs. Mahan's motion?
Second.
But I know exactly what Mr. Radosha is trying to do, trying to answer the second part of it, which I think Mr. Kira did a very good first pass at it. And we need to keep looking at, you know, ways that we can somehow help alleviate it. I don't think it's through the CPA and modifying that and changing Chapter 44, Section 3. B. B, whatever. Sorry. But, so, so that, so I agree with you that, you know, got to keep trying to find a way to crack at it. We do have some warrant. We've passed some last year and the year before. You know, we have a couple more on. Whatever happens between now and when the language of the warrant goes to the printer, if something else comes up. So I agree with you, and, and I take you at your word, that you're just trying to get started and start somewhere. And I just think this is in the appropriate place, respectfully. I'm not, I'm with you. Come home with my husband.
So, I mean, Bob, I'm going to call on you, and then I'll, anyone else from the public?
First of all, on the senior exemption, do you know how many people qualified for that last year? Seventy-one. Out of how many households? You know, it's not a lot. Not many people can get in under that. We've talked about that before, the senior exemption. It doesn't work for most people. And the circuit breaker thing, I'm not sure how far off in the distance that's going to be. In the meantime, you know, the 10-year thing and so forth. I've had comments from people, they say, I, I belong to the AARP now. I'm 50 years old. I'm a senior. Why aren't I included in this thing? And if I had to do it over again, maybe I would drop it down, but I wanted to do something a little bit reasonable. And the 10-year thing was just, I don't know why, that made it sound like you, you were a serious resident, you know? So that, that's, that's basically it. I gave it a try, and if nothing, nothing happens. But again, too many people are wondering, are questioning their ability to stay in town.
That's true.
I hear it every day, every day. I can't take it much longer. My neighbors are moving out. My friends are moving out. And I'm being left alone here. So, anyway, thanks for your time.
Yeah, we're not, we don't, we're going to, I'm going to invite other, Joe, is it okay if I go to the public?
Okay, I just want to respond to one.
Okay.
If, if possible. I just wanted to make clear that on, on one, one of the measures that I mentioned, Town Meeting took the first step to petition the legislature to allow us to actually increase the income limits on the deferral program. So we will be, as Town Meeting will be able to, to enact that immediately.
That's, that's...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, other, sorry, Bob, I'm going to ask you to relinquish the microphone. And other member of the, could you please introduce yourself and welcome?
My name is John O'Kane, and I live on Gardner Street. And I, I just want to say one thing. The problem is, it's not for me. I, I can last here, and if my wife passed away, we now lose part of the income. We all know it's a declining number. Everybody that's working has an income come in, and it goes up. And as you were saying, as a statement you had made in the beginning, that you're trying to put in a catch, a loophole that, that would be able to help a person. Would this happen, would this work if a spouse was lost during a year? Because, A, I'm almost 80, so I, who knows how long. If I pass away and my wife is all alone in the house, I'd hate like heck to see her have to move her out of the city, you know, with her.
Adam, do you want to talk about, or Doug, do you want to talk about one of the potential aspects of the rules that we're considering later this town meeting?
Sure. Yeah, so one, one rule that Mr. Kira has alluded to is, is raising the income limit for the deferral program. So the 71 people that are eligible now, that would be a higher number. And we can, as, as we figure out what that number's going to be, we can study or at least project how many more people would be eligible. The other program we're talking about is more, more unique, and I believe only one or two other communities in the Commonwealth have done this. And it's create a circuit breaker program like the state has for the income tax, that based on certain income and asset limits would cap the amount of property taxes that an individual has to pay. So hypothetically, these are not the numbers that are being proposed. You could cap a qualifying individual or a qualifying family's property taxes at, say, $5,000, with the balance of whatever their property tax bill is being distributed amongst the rest of taxpayers in the community. So I think if that is adopted, if, if this board approves it and the town meeting adopts it, that could be a pretty powerful tool to be able to protect certain residents in town.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this particular article? All right, I'm not seeing any. So we have a motion by Mrs. Mahan to recommend no action, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Next up, Article 50, Local Option Short-Term Rental Impact Fee. Doug, thank you.
Chairman, I'll try to keep Polonius's ironic words of wisdom in mind here. This is one of two warrant articles on short-term rental impact, local exercise options. This is the easier one to deal with, because essentially all it's doing is saying, do we want to adopt a local option tax on Airbnb's and vacation, vacation rental by owner? There are some in Arlington. There's not a huge volume. But the state has afforded us the opportunity to essentially collect some money from those types of properties, and it's restricted in terms of its use. It's supposed to be oriented towards helping with the impacts of those types of uses in communities. The only other wrinkle is that there are actually two, there's, there's sub-options within the option. And you can either limit the option to quote-unquote professionally managed units consisting of one or two or more rental units in the town within a single two or three-family unit. But you can also add the option of asserting essentially the same tax on a unit that is used as a primary residence as well. So if you've got a two-family home, and essentially someone decides that I'm going to live in half of it, and I'm going to vacation rental by owner, or Airbnb the other half of it, without exercising the second piece of that option, they would be excluded from it. So it's just a way of trying to recognize that there's a slight difference in circumstance between somebody who owns a property that they exclusively rent out. I've got one of these on my street. It's fantastic. Where they exclusively rent it out as an Airbnb, and no one occupying it in any way, shape, or form as a resident. And then the other option is for including those resident who rent out either rooms or a whole nother unit within there.
Mrs. Mahan?
I just have a brain freeze, and I'm not reading this correctly. So you cite the two options, two types. And then under that, I'm thinking, because I'm trying to see what it is, you're recommending a process, a way we could go. I think it's missing what, an action, a verb. It says, in order to adopt the second impact fee option, the town must the first option. And then, do you mean to say former and later, or former and latter? That just changed the, the sentence to me.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Mahan.
No, just...
Clearly an error on my part. I apologize.
Oh, no, no. If you can tell me, is, the word missing, and is it former and later, or former and latter? And I'm just saying...
It's both, Mrs. Mahan. I apologize. The, essentially, you have to take a vote that you're going to adopt first 3DA in order to adopt 3DB. You can't adopt 3DB without 3A.
So we're missing votes, so we, we must vote. Okay. I, no, I just, because I had no idea. I didn't look into it.
My fault. Apologize. Mr. Hurd?
Move approval of 3DA.
Only A.
Only A? Do we have to do one at a time?
Not for these purposes, no. If you wanted to do both.
Move approval of 3DA and 3DB.
I didn't mean to jump on you. It's getting late.
No worries.
Is there anybody from the public, this is a public hearing, who wishes to speak to this article? See, oh, wait, we got one.
My name, my name is Sophia. I just don't understand what you just voted on, or what the issue was. I mean, I just may, I, I heard you make two distinctions. But what else? I mean, I didn't, maybe I missed it, but the other person next to me missed it too, so...
It's definitely something that's, we're, we're operating on, we've prob, we've heard about this issue already, so we've got some context we didn't share tonight. So the state earlier this year adopted, or was, maybe it was last year, adopted rules about short-term rentals, so Airbnbs and, and things like that. And then it gives very, the towns opportunities to adopt parts of the state law. So the state says, here's this big set of regulations, and some of the, you can choose to adopt it or not. And specifically, the part that we, and so, just so it's clear, just to remind people, we don't actually decide this. We're making a recommendation to Town Meeting, and then Town Meeting will decide, but based on where this is going. This particular one is about collecting rent, or excuse me, taxes, local taxes on the people who are doing local. Did I miss anything?
On the two types that you described?
Were the two types being, one is a commercial, and the other is just if you rent out your spare bedroom or your, or, yeah. And, and this is short-term Airbnb-type rentals.
So this would be like a, a sit, a town tax? Okay, thank you.
We definitely skipped some of that, because we talked about it before up here. Any further discussion from, not seeing any. We have a motion by Mr. Hurd, and I've lost...
Second by Ms. Rose.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next up, Article 80, Resolution Overnight Parking Exemption Program for Medical and Financial Hardships. And for this one, we've got, it is a 10 registered voter article, and I think the first name on it was Laura Kiesel.
Kiesel.
Kiesel, I apologize. All right, are you coming up first, or you're...
I'm going to speak first.
Awesome. Please do. Thank you.
Hi, I'm William Brooks-Harrison, a resident of Arlington, Precinct 16, Ashland Street in the Heights. And first of all, I want to thank you for your stamina getting through this list. I'm here really as a representative of the Envision Arlington Diversity Task Group. I'm not here in my capacity of any other town organization I might hold office in. The Diversity Task Group is a group of Arlington residents committed to making the town community inclusive, fostering awareness, and creating safe spaces where all voices are welcome and supported. The Diversity Task Group's charter specifically includes examining town policies that place unequal burdens on different town groups. The Diversity Task Group ascribes to a concept of diversity that includes people with low income and persons with disability. It was brought to our attention at a previous meeting that we heard concerns from people in town that the overnight parking ban has a disproportionately large impact on low-income and disabled town residents. The parking ban interferes with the quality and management of life possessed by people with disabilities. The Diversity Task Group is not a policymaking body. It was clear to us that the right forum for discussing this or deciding about this would be Town Meeting. And so, as part of the group, I authored a motion for the DTG to support the creation of a warrant article for a culturally sensitive approach to overnight parking exemptions in Arlington, which was approved unanimously in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Have us, drag, pull your seat over and pull the mic down if that's more comfortable for you.
So I've, I worked in tandem with Brooks and some other people in coming up with the language. And I want to just go through, we decided to do a non-binding resolution because we understand and acknowledge that Town Meeting does not have the authority to amend the ban. That's the select board's jurisdiction, and we wanted to respect that. However, we felt at this juncture, it was really important to foster a public discourse and consideration about who, what populations the parking ban disproportionately adversely impacts and why. One of the reasons that motivated me in particular to get involved with this is I worked for a little while. I was very active in a tenants advocacy group that someone else founded in our town. He's here tonight. And I coordinate and run the mailing list. We have over 60 members. And I have to say, after the cost of living, parking has been the most cited concern and challenge for many people. Either they were misinformed about availability of off-street parking at the residences, and then moved here and found out there were not, and now they're on the street getting tickets. Or they moved in, and then they had a high parking fee proposed on top of their rent. rent, and now they have to choose between paying that high fee or parking on the street. And that was my own personal experience six years ago. I was misinformed that there was availability of off-street parking, and I almost didn't have a parking space. I did secure it at the last minute, but I wound up paying an extra $50 a month for that, which was a significant burden for me on a constrained budget. I can only work part-time because I have a disability, and I needed my car because I worked in Wellesley, and you can't easily access Wellesley from here without a car. And so, I thought that was just a fluke, but I moved in and it turned out other tenants had the same experience, and with this group, six years later, it still seems, still seems like this is a problem. And I know that there's new redevelopment plans in the works and zoning proposals, I've been going to these housing meetings, and I know that one of the proposals is to further reduce or even in some cases eliminate availability of off-street parking spaces at some of the new developments. And when I've been there and asked, like, well, what about people who need cars for work? What about lower-income people? Because the conversation is usually like, people who move here, if they don't have parking, they can just bus or bike. And I've said, well, not everyone can bus or bike. People with disabilities, not all of them can ride a bike, not all jobs are accessible. I've heard things like, well, low-income people just don't drive cars, so it's not going to impact them, or, you know, it'll select those people out of Arlington so they won't be our problem to deal with. And that concerns me, that those are the mindsets that seem to be at play with some of these, not necessarily the people coming up with the proposals, but some of the people who support that. And I wanted to show that this is a disproportionate impact, and I think it puts the town at odds with its own diversity goals. So the thing is, what I'm saying is not just anecdotal, there's very strong data to show that car ownership is integral to job security and economic mobility in this country. The data is overwhelming to support this. There was a huge study a few years ago by the Urban Institute with the University of Maryland and UCLA of 12,000 families who have Section 8 vouchers across major metro areas, including Boston. They found that those people who have cars were twice as likely to have a job and four times to retain it over the longer term. Not only that, those families were more likely to have access and relocate and remain in higher-opportunity neighborhoods, that is, neighborhoods with more green spaces, better schools, stronger housing markets, better health outcomes. In other words, towns like Arlington, that I would hope such families would be able to access and stay in. The Federal Reserve Board also released a few studies last year, or two years ago, and the Federal Reserve Bank, that stated that even in America's cities, they are car-dependent and they're highly segregated, and it is difficult for workers to reach the facilities where the jobs are for them, and those jobs are increasingly in the outer suburbs. And again, that was my experience, I could not find a competitive wage job in the Boston area, I could only find one in Wellesley. And that it's a significant barrier to employment. And that is also for other populations that intersect with lower-income people, immigrants who work here, who need those jobs to, need those cars to access their jobs, domestic, victims of domestic violence in particular, there was a study that found having a car was one of the most integral, crucial aspects of them recovering and having autonomy and safety and moving on with their lives and having economic feasibility. For those of us with disability, the MBTA is very inadequate and very inaccessible. There's a study, it's in your materials, the Disability Policy Consortium wrote, I think it's 84% of the entire MBTA system, buses are inaccessible. I think it's 34 commuter stations are completely inaccessible to people with disabilities. All the green line-running street stations are completely inaccessible. Right here in Arlington, the Boston Globe reported last year that the 77 and 79 bus routes were the most frequently canceled trips, and I know that from personal experience. And there's an actual fallout of this, people who are disabled through surveys, who owned a car, were less likely to miss their appointments, people who were relying on a bus to make a medical appointment were twice as likely to miss that medical appointment, twice as likely to miss filling prescriptions that they needed in a timely manner. So the fallout of that is not just, oh, I missed a run-of-the-mill checkup. For those of us with disability, that might be a critical appointment to maintain our functionality. So that's why we're bringing this here to you today, because if people are, cannot live here because they can't bring their cars here, or if they do live here but they have to make some choice to violate the law and then get tickets, I feel that does an undue burden, and I think that as a town, we can do better to support our marginalized populations and people who are low-income and have disabilities. One thing I also want to say is sometimes people say, well, what about the environment? Doesn't this foster car culture? Now, I'm an environmentalist, I was here a few years ago as a proponent of the plastic bag ban, I worked at the town of Wellesley as their environmental coordinator. I think it needs to be mentioned that lower-income people have much lower carbon footprints than higher-income and middle-income individuals, they're much more likely to use public transit already, so I don't think we should expect them to go without the things we need in our culture as well, especially when it might be, make the difference between them being homeless or being able to survive. And, you know, I think that what that could do is actually ironically make emissions worse in the long term because you will be displacing those people, and they might be, have to move further out to the outer suburbs where they're using their cars more instead of less. At least with me, I could walk or use public transit when I wasn't at work because I lived in this kind of neighborhood, but if I had to live somewhere like Wellesley, I would have to drive in all the time for my medical appointments that are here. So I know that there's municipal lots that people can use, I know that you can get a designated handicap space in front of your residence. I've spoken to several users of the lots, all of them have reported that it is a significant financial or physical barrier or burden on them, it's expensive, I think it's like a dollar a day. I spoke to one woman who has a disability, and every single day she has to take the ride to move her car from the lot by, I think it's 7:00 a.m., stay at her home, and then take, then move her car back and take the ride back home, and that's $3.15 each way, so she's spending over a dollar a day. She is, she doesn't have mobility impairment, so she can't walk to the lot. And of course, if you're having a medical emergency in the middle of the night, your car's not there, now it's over in the lot. So there's a lot of barriers that I've heard from, from people who do use that lot. I spoke to the Arlington Police Department, they told me that that designated handicap space that you can get does not exempt you from the overnight parking ban, they said they probably won't ticket you, but they could, and maybe sometimes they might. I still think that's not fair to ask disabled people to absorb the burden of getting a parking ticket if they need the access to their car. And so, in the place of that, we're hoping that the town can consider an exemption program to the overnight on-street parking ban for those with disabilities and low income. In particular, we're calling it an exemption program for medical and/or financial hardship. I met a week ago with Ally Carter and Aaron Zwirko of the Planning Department and the Governance and Parking Implementation Committee, and discussed what some of these criteria might be. To be clear, we're not trying to be arbitrary or reinvent the wheel, there's already some established criteria in other municipalities specific to parking, as well as in general, like policy exemption programs for people who have, like, either financial or medical hardship. We discussed maybe having automatic eligibility for people who have, are enrolled in certain programs, like SNAP, Medicaid, SSI, SSDI, and/or they are a voucher, housing voucher holder, or they have possession of a handicap, placard, or plates. In other words, they've already been prescreened by the state and determined to have an access need for disability, or their income is at or less than 80% area median income. That was told to me by Aaron Zwirko, because that ties it specifically into the town's inclusionary zoning requirements, where 80% AMI is considered relatively lower income and is what a lower-income or affordable housing unit would be determined by if you're at that income or below. And of course, you know, we discussed maybe having some kind of proof that you don't have an adequate or off-street parking space, whether a lease or a landlord letter or something showing you have a fee. You know, it would be tied only to one car registration or driver's license, so it's not being abused. It could be like a sticker with a month or year of review. We really wanted this to not be subject to a hearing, I know there's already a waiver program, people can come here, but that, I think, also can pose an undue burden. If you're suffering from a financial or medical hardship, it's really difficult. It was hard for me to sit through these two hours with my physical handicap, it was hard for me to be here, so I can only imagine trying to come here and then being scrutinized and having to lay out your private financial or medical hardships. I don't want to see people have to do that because I think it would discourage people from applying, and I want this to be like something that they could apply for online or paper application, where if they have the paperwork, it's just automatic. And again, there are already state programs that have that, I've qualified and applied for them myself, and it works out, so there's already like a precedent to base this on. So I, that's mostly what I can say. I will just say, I, because it's been brought up to me, I didn't want to bring up the 2013 ballot vote because that's not what we're asking here, we're asking something very different. We're not asking to overturn or completely reverse the ban, so I don't think the outcome of that vote has any relevance to what we're trying to do here tonight. I do have certain caveats with that vote, that I could mention that some weaknesses about it, that if you have questions, I can answer, but I don't want to get distracted or conflated with that. I will say that was six years ago, and I do think public opinion changes a lot over time as people become more aware of certain situations. When I first moved here in 2012, six months later, in 2013, I started going to commissions and committees and saying, I want to try to advocate for a plastic bag ban, and I was told, it's a nonstarter, it will never happen in this town. And only a few years later, mindset started to change, and people were approaching me about doing this ban. So I do think people's mindsets can change, and a lot of the people I've spoken to, even those who really support keeping the ban in place, support some reasonable accommodations for a small minority of the population. You know, a couple of other logistics is perhaps it could have like a certain nominal fee to defray some administrative costs. Ultimately, we think this will be just a small amount of the population, a small subset, so I don't think it would overwhelm, you know, be a big administrative burden to implement this. I think it could be fairly easy. I will say, if by some chance it winds up that there's, attracts more applicants than we originally thought, I think that is testament that this has been more of a problem, that the town has really been aware of, and that we should be aware of it, and maybe this is a good first step to handle that without having to discuss more heady issues like, should we overturn the ban? Just to wrap up, we already have a lot of supporters and endorsers, I think you have several letters of support in the materials, as you know, the Arlington Diversity Task Force voted to support this, they actually approached me about this, I wasn't going to get involved for a town meeting this year because I have my own health issues, may even have to have a surgery this spring, but I thought it was important, and it's something I'm intimately familiar with, both in my lived experience and my work-life, so I wanted to be a part of it. The Tenants for a Livable Arlington, the Boston Center for Independent Living, the Disability Policy Consortium, the Massachusetts Chapter of the Marfan Foundation, the American Chronic Pain Association Arlington Chapter, Arlington Chapter of Progressive Massachusetts, and just today, Mass, or actually last night, MassAdapt also signed on to support this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Mahon.
I'll take a stab at it. And I'm really impressed, overwhelmed with all the citations and work that you've done in background and...
I'm sorry, can I just get water, too? I'm feeling a little, like I'm going to faint. I have a...
Oh, yeah, of course.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So just, it doesn't, so, thank you for the presentation, we're going to do our conversation, I'm going to invite other people, so if anyone has a specific question for you, you can sit there, it's totally fine, but I just want, how we've done the other ones, go ahead, Mrs. Mahon.
One of the few responsibilities a member of the select board is to, besides dog hearings, et cetera, is to hear, have hearings for overnight parking, whether handicapped or for the other five criteria. To me, this is adding another level and layer to it. I mean, we do have a system, I know there are times that people have come in, have submitted the request for the plackets, sometimes they come in, sometimes they send a relative, sometimes nobody comes in. We always do that. I know a lot of this is coming out of the apartment buildings on Mass Ave, that because of what the owners are doing, people are scrambling for parking. I think you live on Mass Ave, and I understand your constituency, and you are looking for an answer to the problem that you have, but in all the years that I've been on the then Board of Selectmen, now Select Board, we've always, we've even trumped our rule, we had someone who had a financial hardship who lived in Mass, on Mass Ave up in the Heights, and also had a medical condition, and even though we normally didn't allow people to park there, because of the circumstances that we received in the packet, they couldn't come in because of the medical hardship they had. We granted that for six weeks and waived the fee. So we can, we can always do that. My thing is, this is something that, and I'm all for if, everybody you cited that you've been meeting with, with Jennifer Rade and Julie Wayman, and I'm going to lose all the names, you know, still exploring and having conversations with them, maybe they say there's something that wants to go into the town, town study that we're doing, that we're...
Accessibility study.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, but in terms of this, basically what it's saying is, does the Board of Selectmen want to give away, you know, having the hardship hearings? I've never heard of anyone that's come in and had a hardship, medical or not, that once it was validated, whether they were here or not, that we didn't grant it, as well as, you know, on a few occasions. I think what you're trying to solve, people who move into large apartment buildings, where even if this went through, we couldn't even put you close to where, you know, your apartment buildings are on Mass Ave, but I understand that's a crisis right now because of the way landlords of some of those apartment buildings are acting, I mean, passing it on to you all, so I wouldn't support this, I'll let someone else make a motion unless they want me to, because this select board already has a process set up, but I don't want to stop the conver, I think this is the right way to do it, and I don't know if anyone wants to give me guidance, because I don't want to stop that conversation, but I will say, we've, even people who were in apartment buildings, like the one up in the Heights, when there's a true medical and/or financial hardship, the board has accommodated that request, so I just, I think this conversation needs to continue, but I don't think it's through a warrant article for a process the select board already has set up.
Ms. Carroll.
So I have a lot of thoughts on this, but it seems like there are a lot of people here who want to speak, so I'd like to hear what folks have to say, and then reserve my...
I guess because I live in East Arlington, and it's much more of an issue down there than anywhere else in town, and a lot of my neighbors were upset that the ban wasn't lifted. I think it's much more complicated because there are not that many parking spaces, and I, I think there might be a way of, in the existing sort of frame that we already have, of doing something about it. I think it's a good thing to bring to town meeting, because I think it's, it opens people's eyes up to the problems of how our society is working or not working. And I think, especially now with all these tax increases that we've been hearing about, we're on the cusp of being a two-tier community, and I don't think that's a good thing. So I think that we need to work on the circuit breaker for the seniors, but also some sort of circuit breaker for people that you're talking about, so I'd like to see it go forward.
I'll just say briefly, I think this warrants going to town meeting to get a broader discussion from town meeting and to get input from the people in town meeting. I would like, we deal with a lot of these overnight parking permits in, I'm still not even clear as to what are specific, I see the guidelines, but what I would like to come up with, a more check-the-box-esque way of coming up, determining whether someone warrants an overnight parking exemption, and it would make it so you don't need to prove income or disability, but more that you don't have parking available to you, and you, no one else in your residential unit has parking, and kind of work off that, because I think, you know, it certainly is great, a great cause to push, to have parking for people with disabilities and income limits, but, you know, I think that in the broader sense, there's people that don't fall under those parameters that also might warrant an overnight parking permit, and it's just, it's not quite clear to be exactly which situations we grant them on and which ones we don't. So for me, it's just a list, do you have parking available? X, no. Does anyone else in your residential unit have parking? X, no. And then you can come here, say, here's my application, here's my, I fulfill all the criteria, and based on that, we were warranted a overnight parking permit without the extra need of having someone, someone having to prove that they have a disability or financial hardship. But that's a long way of saying that I think, at least in this specific instance, it would be good to go to town meeting and hear what they have to say.
I'm itching to get...
I know you are, but given, everyone has kind of stated their position, I'm going to put it, put out there what my thoughts are, and then... So I agree with John that I think that what we're lacking are objective criteria, and we do, it has been a struggle, I mean, over the last seven years on this board, we don't necessarily have objective criteria, I mean, we, we kind of know, know it when we see it, as far as what we'll approve and what we don't. But I like the criteria that have been laid out here. In general, like in our previous discussion on the library parking, I'm not a fan of going to town meeting for something that we can do ourselves with a public hearing, but I think that issues of overnight parking... hearing, but I think that issues of overnight parking have been such a hot-button issue, and we have a precedent on the board here, where we've already gone to the ballot for an advisory question on it. It makes sense that if we're gonna have this discussion, that we go to town meeting on this to, to discuss it. I think that some of the, the criteria that are laid out here, they're very logically stated, they're, some of the types of criteria that our Health and Human Services use for eligibility for some of their programs, and that makes sense. The other thing I would note is that the cost of housing is driven, to a great extent, by the use of the land for parking itself, and we've tried to recognize that in some of our zoning changes and, and some of the new affordable housing that's come online, waivers have been given to, to provide less parking, so I draw from that, there's a correlation between more affordable housing and probably lack of parking, and folks would be in need of this type of, an exemption, so right now, where I said, I wanna hear from everyone, but as I stand right now, I'd like to see this conversation go to, to town meeting, and I don't have a problem with it becoming an administrative process either, if it has objective criteria attached.
All right, so let's go to public hearing. Darcy, why don't you come on up? Hey, do you wanna take the chair, move the chair, whatever's convenient for you? Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Darcy Devney, as you know, my portfolio for the Arlington Disability Commission includes parking issues. As a result, I've been investigating the issues about this particular warrant article, including reading Laura's extremely thorough presentation, and we've also talked informally, and she's been to the Disability Commission meetings about it. As I told Ms. Kropelka, some of the research I've been doing for this, I haven't actually finished yet, because I didn't realize this was going to come up quite so quickly for the BOS, so I, I would hope that the Select Board would delay voting on this warrant article until the ADC has met and formally voted, which isn't till February 20th or 27th, but because you probably won't, in the meantime, here are the highlights of my preliminary report and recommendations to the ADC. You probably got the spreadsheet. After gathering data on 70-plus of the larger apartment and condo buildings in Arlington, the most common situation is that the building consists of privately-owned condos or apartments, has 10 or more units, which is important because of the two applicable laws, MGL law about, what are they called, local housing authorities, and the MAAB law, which is the Massachusetts, Massachusetts...
Architectural Access Board.
Architectural Access Board, thank you. And most of the buildings were built pre-1990 and therefore not cause, subject to the current parking minimums. Most of them, though not all of them, and like I said, I have not finished the spreadsheet yet, has about one parking space available for each unit, regardless of unit size, and I would say many of them don't separately charge a parking fee, it's just rolled into the monthly condo or rental fee. Now, for occupants of those buildings that already have a handicap placard and HP, the MAAB regulations are clear, and therefore the warrant article isn't really necessary, because what should happen is that the occupant asks for the reasonable accommodation from the owner or the condo association, that sort of thing, and in most cases, this results in a designated HP spot of the spots that are available. Be aware that Laura is correct, this places a barrier and administrative burden on the individual with disabilities, but that is the current process. The management is reluctant, the Arlington ADA Administrator should really be assisting in filing a formal complaint to the MAAB and persevering, persevering until the situation is resolved. HCA and AHA properties are kind of a similar situation, and the DHCD memo that I gave you in the stuff today also outlines their regulations and kinda, in essence, it's the MAAB rules, it's the same kind of thing, that they should be able to, reasonable accommodation is requested and is granted, and it consists of an HP space. The HCA stuff is the most problematic, because those buildings generally don't have even one parking space per unit, even though there is no reason to assume that the occupants of HCA buildings own fewer vehicles than in a private property, and as Laura points out, it may actually be slightly the other way. Because the ratio of accessible parking spaces is determined by the total number of parking spaces by ADA laws, when the town of Arlington agrees to let developers, public or private, provide fewer parking spaces per building, the number of HPA, HP spaces drops. Again, people can use that MAAB process to obtain spaces, but that is not an ideal situation. One of the things I think is very important about the particular proposal in front of you, HP spaces are public parking spaces. What that means is, there are 50 HP spaces, as we all know, in, in the business districts, and an estimated less than 100 residential HP spaces throughout Arlington. Currently, none of these HP parking spaces are exempt from the overnight parking ban, as Laura said. Since a properly designated HPA parking space, according to the Massachusetts Office of Disabilities, is a public space, it's not reserved for a specific person, regardless of whether that person is the one who asked to have an HP space in front of their residence. So, it would be poor public policy and completely unnecessary to suddenly, in effect, grant overnight exemptions for the 2,000-plus people with handicap placards for less than 100 residential HP spaces currently. That's just, that's bad math. I mean, there are three on my street, there's one that's two houses down, there's nothing that says that I couldn't use that to make it more convenient for myself, so it's, it gets to be a bad issue, and it makes it more likely that you would be more and more reluctant to grant on-street HP spaces, because you would be opening up each of them to overnight parking. So, the summary is basically, and as I said, this is preliminary, I haven't had a chance to phone on it yet with them, the proponents of warrant Article 80 have persuasively outlined the importance of cars as a transit option for people with disabilities. I myself have come to this board and talked about that over and over, access is important. The overlap between people with disabilities and lower incomes, that's documented as well, but we, the ADC, have focused specifically on that medical issues, mainly the HP placard. The ADC believes that this warrant article is, oh, and the privacy issues, by the way, she's absolutely right, nobody wants to come in front of you and talk about their medical issues, and because that kind of stuff is a public record, that means it is available, Google on the internet forever, and I personally find that really hard as a disabled person. But nonetheless, this warrant article is probably not the best solution to the problems outlined by the proponents. If it's not already explicitly stated in the criteria, the ADC urges the Select Board to specifically take the disability status of an applicant into account on a case-by-case basis. Most obvious example, which Laura talked about, is the option of using a rental space in a municipal lot may not be possible for a person with disabilities, because the municipal lots are just not located close enough to the residence. So, in essence, we're, we're doing a very nuanced, or I'm advising the ADC to do a very nuanced parsing of this particular resolution, because there are so many issues involved and so many applicable laws that might be used already, or could be used, or shouldn't be used in this case, or, so, that's it.
Thank you very much. I suspect, did you have a specific question or...
I do.
Yep.
I do, I, I wanna get some clarification, because I'm actually reading the proposal differently from what I think I was hearing. What I think I was hearing from you is that there's a fear that there'd be suddenly 2,000-plus individuals with HP placards for buying for 100 spots, but the way I'm reading the proposal is that, that the, the HP placard is actually, it's a, an eligibility criterion for a sticker, so you're not constrained to HP spots, that's the way I'm reading it, but I'm not sure.
That's what I'm saying. But I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, we have a microphone problem, just because there are people at home who need to hear, so pull up another chair, give it a go.
Um, no, I just, when I brought up the, the, oh, it's okay for just a minute, but if, when I brought up the, the handicap space exemption, it's just because it seemed like a lot of people that I spoke to just was like, well, you can get a designated handicap space and then you can park overnight there, and I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't sure if the Select Board knew that, I know that some other town meeting members didn't seem to know that, and I was like, no, you're still not exempt from the parking ban, and I actually just found out yesterday that still doesn't guarantee, that's a public space that anyone can use. So, this sticker is separate, and again, it's, it's a combination of you having that and not having off-streets parking space.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just wanting to make sure that you're on the same page as the ADC takes a look at this, yeah.
Yes, that we're clarifying, that it's, it's merely that you, if you, in, in some parts of that proposal, what it is talking about is saying that HP spots will automatically be overnight parking spots.
Got it, got it.
And that I am truly recommending against because of exactly what I said.
Got it.
Basically said 2,000 people suddenly have access to 100 overnight spots. I, that's poor public policy.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Any further immediate questions before I go on to the next? All right, who else would like to speak to this issue? Whatever makes you comfortable, just talk into the mic.
Okay, I'm Susan Mortimer, and I came for this issue. I just wanna say that for the past 11 years, I've been car-free in Arlington, and it's been a wonderful, wonderful thing. Fortunately, where I am, there is frequent public transportation, it's fairly regular. I also have access to Zip Cars in Arlington, and so I feel like it's a luxury for me not to have a car in Arlington. I don't like cars, I wish there were many, many fewer. Having said that, I wouldn't be able to go without a car, I wasn't, my children are long, grown, and gone, I could not have not had a car to transport children to various appointments. I could not have done without a car if I didn't have a job that was located on the other end of, of, of public transportation in Leachmere that allows me to do that every day. So, while I do not like cars, and I would love to see many, many fewer, I'd like to add another dimension that was sort of mentioned by the Diversity Committee, that there's another issue here that I would hope we would think about more and where we're coming from. I think the role of class and the gentrification that's happening in Arlington plays a huge role in coloring people's opinion and attitudes about off-street, on-street parking at night. We're not talking about homeowners with driveways here, we don't even think about that. The class issue here is that people are still able to afford to own a home in Arlington, needn't bother with this, and that other people can get special exemptions. That is, that is the way for it to work, but really, I would urge the town, and it's an issue that's very, very, looms large in my mind, and that's the issue of class here in Arlington, and if we're truly committed to diversity, we need to be more inclusive, not insular. I've heard so many comments from people in town commissions or in public that really believe that those of us who rent shouldn't have as much consideration. I, I find that very offensive, and I, I'm just hoping that something will change where the working-class people in rent, in Arlington are being displaced, so that there's fewer of them to speak, but that's the elephant in the room, is to ignore renters while we're still profiting off them by charging them rent in the, in the private parking lots of landlords, and where the rents are going up, the people have to explain a hardship. It's being created by class and gentrification here, and it's something that really needs to be taken into account. At the December ARB meeting, I heard someone speak in the comments section, someone who is a nonprofit, who manages a nonprofit, and that person was here in the audience tonight, jokingly say to the ARB Board that, you know, this is just a small population of people who wanna have parking on the street and it's small, let them ride bikes. I found that very, very offensive, and I'm saying this as someone who does not like cars and is very free not to have a car, and I really hope, and particularly for people who are watching on TV, the issue of class and gentrification in Arlington is huge, and people need more opportunity to, to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Just as I look at the crowd and I see the thing, I'll encourage people to, remind them brevity is the soul of wit, and if you, to resist repeating as much as you can.
Why are you looking at me, sir?
Because you had the misfortune of stepping up forth.
I know, it's 10:30. So, my name is John Sanbonmatu.
Welcome.
I'm a college professor, I teach at WPI. I can basically not afford to live here, I'm working a second job to pay rent, there's a housing crisis here. Presumably, I'm the sort of person that some people in the town think should be here, professional and all that, and I can't afford it. So, I created the, the organization Tenants for Livable Arlington last year, and we had about six or seven meetings, we had dozens of people come, we convened in the library. At one point, one of the librarians came down and said that she can't afford to live in Arlington, you know, so here's somebody who works in the library who can't afford to live here. I'm just saying this because Laura has brilliantly articulated the, the problems with the current parking, no, no parking or overnight parking ban, particularly for the disabled, but I wanna really stress the economic aspect to this. I, you know, we all see the world from our own point of view, but it wasn't until I sat through six or seven of these meetings, and there were like 100 people over the course of these meetings, I, I mean, people having to move out, people who were being evicted, people around the streets, and, and then people who were, they found housing, they found a foothold here, and then the landlord changed the rules about how much money they were gonna have to pay for the, for parking, and so we're all to be forgiven for some ignorance, we don't know all these things, but now that the town is beginning to hear about these things, I think it really is incumbent upon the Board and the town as a whole to remedy these inequalities. It is discriminatory, it is unjust, so I just wanna put that out there, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. You're from Alack, 11 Sunnyside Avenue, I will be brief. I'd just like to, to give three anecdotal points. One, the Board may recognize me as a sort of a diehard bicyclist. I am, I have the luxury of doing that. When I first moved into the Boston area, I was working as a musician, so I had three jobs, worked all hours of the day and night, all over the place, and absolutely needed a car to do that. In fact, the car was quite important because it allowed me to sleep places between gigs. You can't do that on a bike. Second, just in terms of, just in terms of cost of living, I'd like to point out that my mortgage, I bought a house here 11 years ago, I'd like to point out that my mortgage taxes insurance comes out to about $1,685 a month, this is a two-bedroom house. From my, what I understand, this is quite a bit less than market rate rent for a two-bedroom place, and, I mean, that, I, I think that alone speaks, speaks something about the cost of living here. Finally, I'd also, you know, like to just mention, mention the rewrite of our zoning laws that we did in 1975, because I think that's a very key driver of what's happening today. So, 1975's recodification was basically a, you know, a revolt against the construction of apartments, so we, you know, what the Planning Board did at the time and Town Meeting did at the time was to really clamp down on how much multifamily housing could exist and zone most of the town for single-family. So, what we've done is limit the supply of housing and make sure that the supply that's available is, is expensive as, as it could be, i.e. single-family homes. I think this is coming back to bite us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Eric Poole, nice to meet everyone.
You live in town or where?
I live in 285 Massachusetts Avenue.
Thank you.
And I, I wanna support the warrant article under, under consideration, as it is not limited to East Arlington, and as, as density increases, it's not just existing populations that it considers, but it considers who can and cannot be considered to move into the area as density increases. And finally, you keep reasserting that brevity is the soul of wit, I agree. Your time is very valuable, and I would rather this be a process that's more automated rather than requiring your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Dominguez again. I live in East Boston. I'm sorry, East Arlington. Anyways, I do research in East Boston. Oh, anyways, I didn't really, I wasn't quite aware of the problem with needing where to park, but I got a roommate who ended up, we looked for a spot for him forever. I mean, it just took forever. And we ended up, he ended up having to walk almost a mile to get in his car early in the morning, and then come back at night and walk back. And when it got to be like four degrees out, I mean, it was horrible. It was just horrible. So, and so I wanted to talk about that, but also talk about the fact that if you look at Nextdoor Neighbor, which is a website for neighborhoods, there's people looking for parking spots all the time, all the time. So this is a heavy-duty issue. This is not just something that, I mean, this is something that needs to be paid attention to. It's really necessary. There's loads of housing in East Arlington that has multiple residents. That's what East Arlington is. It's a high-density area. There's multiple residents in these houses. So this whole idea that two people will take part in a driveway is nuts. It's just nuts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else is up? Welcome.
I'd be very brief. My name is Cass Barkisberry, and I am a town meeting member. And I participated with other people in the...
Mike, they can't hear you, so...
Okay.
Just speak into it, I'm sorry.
I participated with other people in Livable Arlington, and a couple of weeks ago, we had a block party, and my residence has the good fortune of having sufficient parking for all people who live there, and I explained the situation. And everyone there was very sympathetic. We had about 20 people there. Everyone there was very sympathetic and believed that those who did not have access to parking, or renters, should have access on the street that's nearby. No one had any objection or felt that it was bad to do that. They were compassionate, and they recognized it was a hardship for many people. That's all I needed to say, and I just want you to understand from my experience, talking with people in my community, they are in favor of that.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak? Welcome.
Hi, Lynette Martin again. Sorry, just looking at my notes here. So I've been a member of the community for not as long as a lot of other people, a little less than 10 years now, I think. And I have to say, I've been very proud to be a resident here. We always, everybody seems to always be on the side of good, I feel like. But I'm just sort of shocked that we're here, having to like make such a strong case for this today, because, and I sort of feel a little bit of shame that Laura did this amazing job, but that she had to be here as a disabled, low-income person advocating for herself. I'm a member of the Arlington Diversity Task Group, and I know that Arlington put together the envision, Vision 2020, long before I got here. If we're going to state diversity inclusion as a core value of the town, then we need to advocate for all of our neighbors. It seems like last year, we advocated for immigrants. I was involved in the sanctuary town push and was very happy that we landed on that side. But it seems like when we talk about class and disability issues, people get forgotten. I don't feel like I'm overstating it to say that, I feel like we have a moral obligation to find a way to make this work instead of stating the obstacles to it, like what do we need to make this work? Because, one, we need to make it work, but then a totally separate issue that has come up briefly tonight is that, you know, it's humiliating to make people come up here and state their disability, their financial hardship. I'm sure that we're in violation of HIPAA laws, I don't know, but it just seems like, you know, a waste of all of your time to have to, one by one, make decisions on case by case and make people sort of bear their souls. So I hope that we can work together to make this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up. Welcome, if you could reintroduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Rose Udix. I live in Precinct 12. I would just like to say that, just underscore the idea that people need their cars to get to multiple jobs. We have a lot of people who work in Burlington, for example. Maybe they are nurses and work late shifts and have little access to public transportation, and they work more than one job. So as the gentleman said, getting from job to job on buses or bicycles in the dead of winter is not fun or even possible for a lot of people. The second point I'd like to make is that this should be a simple process. It shouldn't, it shouldn't need another administrative overlay. The documentation that people already have from disability commissions or doctors should suffice to show that they have a need, and people who have a hardship can easily show that as well, and it should be a simple process like applying for a marriage license. It shouldn't take up so much of your time. It'd free up your time for other town business, and it can be done simply and efficiently if the rules are clarified as you had spoken about and came up with clear criteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public who wants to speak on this one?
All right. I haven't gone yet, so I want to go. So many of the members of the board have heard me say this before, but some of the people in the audience haven't. When I ran for selectman, I thought I had a pretty good idea of what I was getting into. And my mom was a selectman in the town that I grew up in. I'd been involved in Arlington government. I'd, you know, I've had a pretty good idea. And people would say, hey, Dan, you know, after I was a year, in the office for a year, they'd say, so what was the most surprising thing? And I'd say, easily, it's the amount of time that I spend talking about parking. Because, because parking is a scarce resource, and it is something that is owned by the town, and then figuring out how to allocate this scarce resource when the demand exceeds the supply is a real challenge. And it's something that, like, I mean, you know, here we are. I've been in office almost eight years now, and it still takes up a lot of my time. So I'm, and I don't mean this as a, like, it's a waste of time. I mean it as, it's a thing. It really, you know, it's an issue. It's hard. When we put the overnight, when we put the parking, actually, let me come back to that one a second. We've talked, there have been a lot of conversations tonight about what the criteria would be for granting access to this scarce resource. But one of the things that we haven't talked about at all is what the cost of enforcing that is, because we can choose to put in placards or stickers or whatever, but then we also, realistically, we need a different enforcement mechanism than we have today if we're going to do something like that. And so I guess I'm going to pose it as a form of a question to the manager. Has, is this something you've given a lot of thought of? And if not, I'm just going to say, hey, can we look at it? Can you think about it some more in the future? But do you have any thoughts off the top of your head?
I think for the scope of what's being proposed in the resolution, I'd have to talk with the police department to get a sense of what the scope of cost would be.
Okay. So I just want us to be cognizant that it's not just how do you give the sticker or whatever it is out. It's also about what you do with those stickers afterwards. When I, when we put the overnight ballot, the parking ban on the ballot many years ago, I was like, my goal was to overturn it. I was, I was ready to say, like, the town has changed, we can do enforcement mechanisms, we can keep it safe. I want there to be overnight parking in town. And I was disappointed and surprised when it lost as resoundingly as it did. What I did at that point is I, as I took it as essentially, there are times when I would buck, you know, the voter. I don't do exactly what, you know, I do what I think is best, but when you get an opinion like that, you say, okay, that's the town that people want to be. One of the things that I'm seeing in the last few months and in tonight is the power to change that. What we didn't have during that last ballot question is an actual campaign. We didn't have people who were out there trying to advocate. And one of the things we get when we have a proposition two-and-a-half override, among others, is we have a bunch of motivated people who go out into the town and say, this is, we need to change the status quo. The status quo is this tax rate, we have to change it. And so if the status quo is a parking ban and we need to change it, it isn't something that technically, by fiat, the board of selectmen could probably make a change, but we would be ineffective at it because there would be so many unhappy people about the change. What this, I believe, we could do is we could create the campaign that changes the town's opinion and makes it willing to change, make a change in the status quo. So for those reasons, I am in favor of moving forward with this, because I want town meeting to talk about it, because I want more people to get involved, because I want that campaign to happen, because I fundamentally, in the long run, want to reverse that vote that happened in 2013.
Is that in your motion?
I am a chair. I'm not making no motions.
Do you want a motion?
Yes.
Go move.
Second.
I feel like we have to give Doug some direction on this one.
Yes.
That's why I didn't make a motion, because it's really not...
Doug.
If I may, there's a lot of information that's been presented by the article proponents, but I need, like, something in a resolution form for you to coalesce around. So if the sentiment of the board is sufficient to say that we want a resolution to go forward to town meeting, what I would propose to do is to work with the folks who proposed the article to try to develop a resolution that discusses the scope of the issues as the board has presented them, and then come back to you in the vote-in common period and say, this is what it is. If that's what the board is inclined to do, if the board is inclined to have a conversation at town meeting, I think what I would, hearing from the board should be emphasized, is that the board ordinarily does not like to have a bunch of referendum on policies that are outside of the scope, that are within its scope or within the scope of some other body. But this is an issue that requires broader participation and perspective, and that's where I sort of orient the comment towards, but I'd still need to work with these folks to have a resolution. And there are some real choices that need to be made. I think Laura highlighted some of the options, but what are the criteria going to be? Is this going to be for low, is it going to be income-based, is it going to be disability-based, or is it going to be a combination of both?
So, yeah, let me, and let me make, throw out a suggestion and see what my colleagues think about it, which is that, so in the end, this is going to come back to us. So we don't have to, in my mind, we, it isn't that we would, we wouldn't necessarily want the resolution to be super prescriptive about like what the exact details of this are. What we'd want is we'd want to go to town meeting and say, hey, town meeting, we're contemplating this change. In fact, we support this change, but we need your support to get on board with it. And so that, I mean, that means putting enough meat on the bone that the town meeting members can understand what they're voting on, but I don't want to be like draft-by-law level of detail. That would be my, but I, Mrs. Park.
As I said, I want the conversation to continue, and I definitely would support this, but I think what we also need, town meeting members, is a large part of this is out of the 40, 50-plus apartment buildings in Arlington that the landlords have done a lot.
Some of it, but not all of it.
No, can I just finish, please? I'm really trying to, I just want to make sure that when we say, that if we have this conversation and town meeting says yes, and the board does this, but then we still are going to need a ballot question, because it's really overnight parking, because got to look at the pool that is being opened up to. Largely, it's in East Arlington, and it's not just apartment buildings. It's also, you know, condos that each one only has one deeded space each, and some people have two, three, four cars. I get that. I grew up in East, I grew up in the projects. I didn't know it was not on me manner. It was called projects when I went. We rented on Agaton Road, 23 Agaton Road. I totally get the situation, but I just want to make sure that we have the parameters, if you all could compile what you would place as an estimate or approximation of how many parking spaces we'd be talking here. Not that it's an exact, because I know someone was saying a number of 100. This would be close to 1,000, if not more. And where would those cars go? And then we'd need the opinion that it's really, this board cannot, I think, and you all tell me as we go down the road, to that degree, basically overturn the three times we've been to the voters on the ballot question, overnight parking. You may say, yes, you can do it, and say, one can park on these streets or a mass half, or maybe we have the conversation to say, can we have a ballot question that goes either by precinct? That goes by three areas of the town? Because the way, and I mean, when I was growing up, we couldn't afford a car, so... But anyways, because when I've looked at the numbers of the overnight parking ban when it's gone down resoundingly, it's pretty close in East Arlington, but it's still, I can't remember it winning in any precinct, but it's close. But when you get up to the heights where I live, right near the Odison School, and in the center, closer to the heights, that's where it overwhelmingly just fails. Well, guess what? We all have driveways up there. We all have places to park, you know? Majority own the home up there. So I'm not against any of this, but I want to make sure that we have a sense of what this universe is, as well as defining what the criteria is, and then later on down the road, I don't want to say that once we come to this and we all agree, if in effect, the select board is overturning the overnight parking ban by that number of cars, I don't think we can do that unless town council tells us. I agree with the chairman. Ultimately, in order to solve this, there has to be a campaign for that, but maybe we look at, like I said, different ideas. Can we have a precinct by precinct or area by area? I'm just putting this out, not for talk, just for that. So I'm willing to support moving forward, but, because I know what the issue is. I've been following it, and I've been going to a few meetings, so I'm not...
So is the suggestion to send a town meeting that we're contemplating overturning the park, overnight parking ban in total?
In East Arlington.
Because...
Basically, yeah.
To me, and from the perspective of the proponent, that, well, we're talking about something different right now, if we were to do that, I think it would be disappointing because I think it would fail. I just want to reiterate again that I think that the solution is to come up with an easy criteria that says, do you have parking? No. And it wouldn't, it would help all the people that you're trying to help with your article without having them have to come up and say, you know, we have income reasons for it, or we have disability reasons for it. And I think that's what we should send, if that were, if we were going to send something to town meeting, say something along those lines.
Doug.
If I may, members of the board, I have a suggestion. I'd like to put together two things for the board's consideration and the folks who have worked so hard on this. I'll put together a resolution, but I also can put together a proposal that tries to speak to what Mr. Hurd is talking about, whereby if everybody's satisfied, I don't know that that's possible, but if everybody's satisfied, it doesn't require a town meeting action. It's a little bit hard to gauge. I mean, Ms. Devaney has made some very sound arguments for some things that are concerning on a logistical level from the disability commission's perspective, but obviously, there's been a lot of quality data presented here, and there are a lot of quality concerns by members of the board of select, members of the select board about, are we going to do something and then the town's going to revolt against this? Or is there some sort of way in which we can process this without this really being a town meeting issue? So I'll do both, if that's okay with the board. I'll draft a resolution. I'll draft a way in which you might modify your existing regulations to create something that, along the lines of the exemption program, and then the board can choose. Does that make sense?
It's good by me. And I'll also say, John, your point is well-taken, that there's a scope here, and the scope is, and we should live within that scope. I agree with you.
Because again, if we put it as an, to overturn the exemption, it's not going to pass.
You made the point, yeah. So we have a motion from Ms. Rowe, which is positive, and we're going to get, and we're going to do another round with the two documents from town council. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five-zero vote. Thank you all for your time and your attention. Okay, next up on the agenda, correspondence received, March for Meals campaign with Meals on Wheels, Kelly Maggie Wright.
Move receipt.
Second.
Second. Well, I guess we're just, okay. New business, Ms. Karpalka.
Right now.
Mr. Heim.
None.
Adam.
I wouldn't dare.
No.
I have one, two, three, none.
Mr. Hurd.
I had any at the beginning of the meeting, I don't know.
No new business. I will say one, which is that I went to the long-range planning meeting, which was last week, and there was a... last week, and there was a robust discussion about our choices. And I think that most of the members appreciated that we were putting the two votes on. That was not unanimously held by the members of the long-range planning committee. And there was no qualms about the high school. There were some qualms about the operating override. And I think there's also a really interesting discussion about the school department's proposal for increasing their budgets beyond what was, they've been constrained within the rules of the previous override plus the new enrollment, and they're basically, and they're asking for a new set of rules. And there was another robust discussion about that, which really has a lot of impact for us about our decision, which we've got, got coming down the road, about how many years and how big to put on the ballot. And I guess I'll just say that towards that end, I, I guess I'm going to put on the agenda for a future meeting for us to talk about what we want, because one of the, in past overrides, we've had a bunch of conversations when we got to the actual day, and then we said, all right, now we're going to do it. And I wonder if we can perhaps get to consensus before that. And, but that's, I know it's late, but I did want to share that result. Seeing none.
Move adjourned.
Wait, I'm purposely wait? No.
No, but I accept the motion even before, and our next scheduled meeting is February 25th, 2019. All those in favor, in terms of, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.